Policy and Planning Board to order, we do appear to have a quorum. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Grant Foster.
Yeah.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Rebecca Campbell.
Present for now, but I need to leave to attend the Food Policy Council meeting for a little bit, so I'm going to leave and be back hopefully within the hour.
Eric Sunquist. Chris McKeel.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini. Badri Lankala.
Present.
Robert Burke.
Present.
Thank you. And would our tech facilitator please begin with our standard virtual meetings opener?
Sure. Welcome to our virtual meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Staffing committee will have muting and unmuting control for themselves. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click Raise Hand when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you have entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Our first item of business then is approval of minutes from our November 16th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion by Badri, is there a second? Please use the hand raise feature. I can't see everyone's face. Second, by Alder Furman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from our November 16th, 2020 meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous. First, the next item is Legis star three, sorry, six, three, two, nine, eight. Public comment for items not on the agenda. I do believe we have one registrant, Bob Schaefer. So Bob, if you are with us, I think I've just allowed you to speak.
Okay.
But Bob, you've got, you've got three minutes.
Okay. I just want to bring the attention, the committees or the board's attention article in the New York Times yesterday about existential peril, mass transit faces huge service cuts across the U.S. And in Boston, the transit officials warned of an ending of weekend service on the commuter rail. And Washington, late night metro service would be eliminated and nineteen of the system's ninety-one stations would close. Atlanta, seventy of the one hundred and ten bus rolls have already been suspended. The New York subway and buses to commuter rail aids are threatening service, drastic service cuts. I think that at this point in time, that the possibility of getting federal assistance is also identified in this article as being very dubious. And so that, as I've mentioned to you before, TransitX, privately funded system, Tom has had the new revised version of that for a couple of months now and been sitting on it. And I think that it needs to be evaluated and at least talked to the people who are providing it to get some better idea and having questions answered. It does address the union situations that the mayor had concern about. It does ensure that people who are, whose jobs have been eliminated would be offered retraining and jobs posted within the functionality of the TransitX. And that it could be potentially installed depending upon how fast the city moves on things within a couple of years, far before what the expected BRT system is designed to project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Disclosures and accusations. Are there any communications, disclosures, or accusations from members of the body? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first new business item of the evening, Legis star six, three, zero, four, one. Amending the Triangle Manona Bay Neighborhood Plan to revise the transportation recommendations for the North-South Public Street from Regent Street to West Washington Avenue, from ped bike friendly to ped bike only, with emergency vehicle access for the North-South section from Regent Street to Braxton Place. This is an amendment that's sponsored by Alder Evers, and I see he has his hand up, so I'm going to allow him to speak first. Go ahead, Alder Evers. You're muted, Alder Evers.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask the indulgence of the body to table this item until Alder Kimball could get back. This is an item that will be going before council, and I think it's important to have a rigorous discussion and full participation of the body to the extent possible. And if it would please the body, I would ask that you take up some other items, and then we'll come back to this particular item when Alder Kimball returns.
Thank you, Alder Evers. I would need a motion from a board member to do that. Alder Foster, go ahead.
I would move to place this on the table.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Margaret. Discussion? All right, all those in favor of tabling this for the moment until Alder Kimball can return, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Hearing none, or seeing none, rather, that is unanimous. An item is tabled for the moment. We will then move on to Legis star six, two, nine, four, eight, authorizing the administrative approval and execution of documents granting, accepting, altering, or releasing certain easements or recorded property interests by the city. Do we have a presentation for this one?
No, we didn't. We asked if they wanted to present. Actually, someone from real estate was willing. I think this, but I don't see her on the attendee list. It's, yes, actually, it's the person who is able to attend from real estate is not here. Perhaps I neglected to have an invitation. There's some invitations sent to her. My apologies.
Okay, so perhaps we want to refer this to a future meeting. Alder Foster, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna move referring this to our next meeting so that we can hear about it.
Sounds good. So we do have a motion to refer. Badri, I see your hand. It looks like a second. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of referring this item to our next meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. Just juggling screens here. All right, our next item is Legis star six, two, nine, four, eight, authorizing the administrative, excuse me, that wasn't what we just did. Next item is Legis star six, three, one, four, three, repealing sections twelve point seven eight, twelve point seven eight, one, three, four, and five. Amending sections twelve point seven nine and section one point zero eight, three, eight of the Madison General Ordinance is to eliminate the city bicycle registration system. Do we have a presentation for this item?
Yes, we have two people here. We have Renee Callaway, Anne, and John. I don't know who's going to present first.
I am going to, just a second here. So, um, this, I looked back and I was actually at the March second, twenty twenty meeting to talk about this idea of do, what do we want to do about the bike registration? There was the idea of repealing. And so to Legis star, I actually attached the presentation from March. I was actually surprised it wasn't that long ago. It seemed much longer. Things changed immediately after that meeting. But at that meeting, there was a motion to support the idea of repealing the ordinance and working with one of the programs instead. So I attached that presentation because I did not feel like I probably needed to take up your time going through all of those items again. But then I did attach a few additional items, and obviously, we are happy to, you know, review some of that information from before, answer questions. And as Tom mentioned, John Ryder, who's actually the bicycle registration coordinator, is here today in case there are more specific questions that you have that might be best answered by him. But we just put together, John put together this chart that kind of shows registrations over time. One thing that has really impacted it is in the past, the university was much more a partner in this program. They actually, in the ordinance, receive half of any of the registrations that they sell themselves. But in talking with them, they really are not participating in that and are not looking to sell registrations themselves. So that is one reason for it going down. But obviously, there is a national registration now, as I mentioned back in March. You know, one of the things that was in the report that helped establish this program was, there wasn't a national program, which even then they saw as having more benefit and impact in returning bicycles to people, because even back then, they could see that not all bikes that might be found or might be stolen would just be here in the Madison market, especially with, we have a lot of people coming and going every year, moving in and out, so that obviously also impacts it. And I think, you know, today's bicycle thieves, unfortunately, have a lot of different ways that they can sell bikes and be more sophisticated about it and not just, you know, put a sign on in the yard to sell it. So one thing I did want to bring up that wasn't in the original document back in March when we were talking about this is more, since you supported it, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the timeframe considerations. Is that it would take a little bit of time to wind this program down. We would need to announce the change and work with our partners. And when I say bicycle retailers, it's not just the little shops, but really, the big box stores or anyone who sells, you know, bikes in different kinds of stores would need to be contacted, and we have a variety of different ways that we have for trying to to work with them, because, you know, just giving everyone an email isn't always the most effective way with people who are in bicycle sales. And we would want to update the website and close down the online sales, obviously, if we repealed. And then, in terms of going with a national program, we have been working with them to provide the necessary documentation to different departments here, our attorneys, risk management, IT, to make sure that we're comfortable with that partnership and that we feel like that they, we would feel comfortable promoting them because they're taking data privacy seriously. So we would want to just finalize that with our internal staff to make sure that they had everything that they needed to feel comfortable with this partnership, begin to promote it. We would want to send a letter to everyone who has a currently registered bike, as well as an email to everyone who's in the system to let them know about this change. So in talking it over, we felt like it would probably be, you know, around three months to make sure that all of that was done in a satisfactory manner. And then just with our current bicycle registration program, if we just weren't sure, decided not to repeal, you know, we really, the annual year for a bike registration is not January first to December thirty-first. It is actually May fifteenth to May fourteenth. And you do need to do some things like order the decals that go on the bikes and things like that, that would impact just wanting to know that in a timely fashion so that we did not have to pay rush charges or anything extra to really make that process still go forward. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about the bike registration coordinator that we do currently have. Obviously, if this ordinance is repealed, we would still need someone to shut down the current program, set up the new partnership that we would have, promote that. But also, this position has other duties as assigned. It is an all bicycle registration coordinator. And in my mind, I would want to see, there's obviously always going to be some registration work. We certainly would want everyone to know about our partnership with a national program. We would want them to have an opportunity to use it, to know about it. But we also would need to continue spending time, the registration coordinator spends time now on bike parking, the pedestrian flag program, fix-it station issues, maps, event assistance, some things with data. And I would not want that time to go away. I certainly would not want to have less time spent on these items, and ideally, this would allow some time to spend more, to put more time into these issues instead of less. And so I do feel like it's important to bring that up, that the repeal of the ordinance, it doesn't really address this issue, but I wanted to be upfront. You know, I think I mentioned back in March that ideally, I would prefer to have someone doing this full-time. It's currently a part-time position. But I feel like there would be a decrease in service in some of these areas if this position just somehow went away when the ordinance was repealed. And that is all that I really wanted to share today. I think I do have the other presentation, though, if people have anything from there they want to talk about.
Thanks, Renee. And I think we'll go to public comments. We have two that I'm aware of here, plus a recent email. First one is Bob Schaefer, six, Cottonwood Circle. Bob, it looks like you're still with us, so you know the drill, three minutes. Go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. I've been concerned about this for many years, even back when I was on the ped bike. That one of the things that we have made an effort for is share the road with bikes and having bikes have the same priority or the same thing as motor vehicles. And I very much support that. The problem is, is that the bicyclists have no in the licensing and registration, that there is no requirement to have gone through the rules of the road, studied the rules of the road, and tested on the rules of the road. I think that going back to when I first moved to Madison where a visible license was required on the bike would also help to ensure that stolen bikes could be more easily retrieved, because the bicycles going around without licenses could be stopped to find out why they didn't have a license and perhaps recover that if it was a stolen bike. The other thing is that what bicyclists currently do now, and I've had this happen on a number of occasions, where especially where they're making right turns and there's a stop sign there, they just make the right turn. They don't bother to stop. When habits like this are experienced riding bicycles, when that person gets into a motor vehicle, those same habits tend to be persistent. That if we looked at it and said the bicyclists already know the rules of the road, then when that person goes to get a driver's license, why is it necessary for them to study the rules of the road and be tested on that? So that what we need to do is look at this. If we are having that become a standard for vehicle operation, bicycles considered the same way, then bicycles had to be treated in the same manner.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Are there any questions for the speaker? Mr. Schaefer registered in opposition. Seeing no questions, we'll move on. There was a, we have a Sally Lehner from Madison Street, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, not wishing to speak. And then we did have an email. Craig Weinhold, let me just pull that one up here real quick, in case folks, for those who may have had a chance to read it. Madison's bike registration law is obsolete, but that doesn't mean bike registration is useless, or that Madison Municipal Code and Madison's Department of Transportation have no role to play. The law should be rewritten. The Department of Transportation and Chief of Police shall together select a nationwide bike registry service to partner with and periodically reevaluate that choice. Department of Transportation will manage registrar partnership. The Department of Transfer, I'm sorry, I got distracted for a moment. The Chief of Police shall primarily use that registrar, registrar when working with lost, stolen, or impounded bicycles. Madison area dealers are required to register all bike sales with that registrar. BW Madison shall actively promote and use the same registrar. Neighboring communities, neighboring municipalities are encouraged to adopt the same registrar. Today's law justly identifies dealers as the best place to capture bike registrations. Unfortunately, dealers have long flooded the law. With a free and less onerous registration process, hopefully, they will get on board. If not, Madison should still have the right to impose fines. The email then includes some references to some national bike registries and then gives a regards. So, questions for staff or speakers?
Before we move on, can I just say that there's Gabrielle Ward, who's registered to speak to item that we can't determine which one it is? Can we clarify with that person?
Yes, let's go ahead. Gabriel, can you hear us?
Yes.
What is the item that you wanted to speak to?
The Bayview Transportation.
Okay, thank you. That one will be coming up. Make sure that you get a chance to speak. Okay, on the bike registration, questions for staff or speakers? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Just a clarification for Renee. The first speaker's comments seem to be referencing more of something like a licensing process for operators of bicycles. I guess if you could just confirm, the current registration program has nothing to do with operator requirements or education or anything like that, correct? It's just a registration for the vehicle.
Correct. It's just a registration for the vehicle. There's no, nothing related to rules of the road or testing or anything like that that goes with it.
All right. And the current requirements for registering apply to all bicycles. So this would include children's bicycles that are never operated on the road or anything else, correct?
There is a wheel size, and John, you might jump in with the wheel size, but it does include most children's bikes.
That's fine. We don't need to go to John. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, many children's bikes are included because it goes down to a fairly small wheel size.
Great. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, is there a motion? Alder Foster?
I would move approval.
Is a motion, is there a second? Badri, is there a second? Any discussion?
I'll just quickly speak to it if I can.
Yes, go ahead, Alder Foster.
So just wanted to thank staff for putting in the energy into this and come up with what I think is a transition plan and sort of a hanging chat of our ordinances that I think is probably long overdue for getting repealed. So it makes sense in in all the ways, in financial ways, in enforcement ways, et cetera. So I encourage everybody to support it, and again, just appreciate staff's work on the transition plan.
All right. Thanks, Alder Foster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion to recommend repealing sections twelve point seven eight, twelve point seven eight, one, three, four, and five. Amending sections twelve point seven nine and section one point zero eight, three, A of the Madison General Ordinance is to eliminate the city bicycle registration system. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that is unanimous. We will then move on to Legis star six, three, two, four, one, discussing and improving Vision Zero Action Plan outline in the revised High Injury Network.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just very briefly, I want to thank the board for our guidance on the initiative. Staff team has been working very hard on moving this forward. One thing in particular is the High Injury Network. So we have taken the input from the board, and we are making some tweaks. We feel like we're at a point that getting really close, and we want to, you know, get, want the board to help us to take a look at it again and hopefully finalize the High Injury Network soon. I just want to say that, you know, we want to treat it as a leaving document. So every year, we're going to reevaluate, you know, based on the previous data and kind of adjust the network as we go. Another thing we have been working on is the draft action plan outline. So we want to get an input from the board and guidance early on when we develop the action plan. And we have many more things to come to the board. So with that, I'm going to pass on to Renee and Ellie.
All right. Am I able to share my screen?
You should be able to, but we just see you right now.
Now can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, everyone. First, we're going to talk about the draft High Injury Network. Last time we came to you all with our maps, and then you gave us suggestions, and we took all those into consideration, and this is of the map we have so far. It's pretty much similar to the same, but we made some tweaks, of course. You can see we still have the tier one and the tier two. And then, so these are the changes we made. The High Injury Network was derived by using a hotspot method. This was done by mapping all crashes on city-maintained streets using RTIS. Lower severity crashes were filtered out, leaving only cane. Lower severity crashes were filtered out, leaving only cane A, so fatal and severe level crashes. Clusters of these crashes were then linked together using best judgment to create tier one of the High Injury Network. The mapped B-level bicycle and pedestrian crashes were used to create tier two of the High Injury Network. And this was done using the same hotspot methodology described above. These lower level severity bicycle and pedestrian crashes were used due to the fact that these crashes leave individuals more vulnerable to injury than motor vehicle only crashes. And then Alder Foster emailed me today with the suggestions about, you know, corridors that he would maybe like to add. So if you would like to speak on that. Alder Foster, do you want to maybe, I guess?
Sure, yeah. Or, yeah, we could either, I guess, talk about it now. I don't know if you had other parts of your presentation.
Yeah, we do. It's up to you if you want to talk about it now or after the entire presentation.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't you do your whole presentation, then we can kind of come back and think, yeah, it'd make more sense to talk about later.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the action plan outline. We're going to, I'm going to give a few examples of different cities around the country who are part of the Vision Zero Network already and show you some of their outlines and then I'll show you our proposed outline. So for example, Minneapolis, they started off with Y Vision Zero and then they give safety data and then Minneapolis Vision Zero guiding principles, and then they list off all of their principles that they had in their action plan. And then they had a section for implementation approach, as well as they ended with engagement summary. And then for Philly, they had a much more bigger outline. They began with a letter from the mayor and Vision Zero pledge. Philadelphia, three-year snapshot, they had executive summary, a three-year overview, action plan progress, an equity section in Vision Zero, and then moving forward, a safe systems approach, aligning Vision Zero with complementary initiatives, so other initiatives that would coincide with Vision Zero, transformative policies, capital plan for 2025, and then Vision Zero Year Three Grants. And then they ended with the Vision Zero Task Force and subcommittees. Next is Charlotte and Denver. And as you can see, these outlines are not as long, but they still have, you know, very in-depth action plans. So these are examples of, you know, outlines that aren't as big. Charlotte started with executive summaries, similar to Philly, or I guess Philly had an executive summary as well. And then what is Vision Zero? Why Vision Zero for Charlotte? They had guiding principles on developing the action plan and they had a section for focus areas and then what you, what you can do. And that's what they ended with. For Denver, they started with our called action and then let's take action, positive changes and how we develop the plan. As for Portland and Seattle, Portland started off with a letter from Commissioner, Vision Zero Statement. Portland needs Vision Zero, why Vision Zero, engaging Portland to create a plan, causes of death and serious injury section, a closer look at the data, locations of death and serious injury, taking action, and then they ended with implementation and accountability. And then Seattle, theirs was shorter as well. Letter from the mayor, they started with a letter from the chief and S D O T director. And then they had a section for a vision for safer streets, near turn actions, and then valuation, and then they had a conclusion section. And then San Francisco and Boston were much more in-depth. They had very lengthy, lengthy action plans. And San Francisco began with a note from the mayor, action strategy overview, getting to zero section. So how their plan to get to zero deaths on San Francisco roadways. Vision Zero core principles, they have a section for, and then goals, policy agenda, commitment to equity, existing inequities, that was an interesting piece. Then they had a High Injury Network section, strategic actions section, measuring progress section, and ended with a Vision Zero pledge. And then lastly, Boston, they started with a letter from the mayor, core principles of Vision Zero, evolution of Vision Zero, why Vision Zero now in Boston, and then a section for focusing on the issues, detailed action plans, action plan to reduce speeds and build safer streets, action plan to reduce distracted and impaired driving, action plan to engage Bostonians in Vision Zero, to hold ourselves accountable section, and what you can do, then a conclusion. And so, you know, looking at all of the different cities, this is the outline that we came up with. We thought we would start off with a letter from the mayor and council president. And then we'd go on to, you know, describe why Vision Zero, why now? And then Vision Zero guiding principles, and we'd go through all of our principles, which is prioritizing safety, data-driven equity, communities of concern, and engagement, of course. And the next section would be data. So we'd go into our High Injury Network, crash factors, crash demographics, equity and disproportionate impact analysis. And then the next section would be strategies and actions. So we'd go through our subcommittees such as safe streets, safe people, safe vehicles, safety data, the safety-focused enforcement. And then lastly, we would end with implementation and accountability. So we'd go through our short-term actions, Vision Zero and other initiatives that went along with Vision Zero, as well as ongoing engagement and measuring and reporting progress.
All right. So obviously I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the strategies and action sections and kind of what those different things mean. You see these in a fair number of Vision Zero cities in the Vision Zero Network. They use these sort of terms for their action plan. So safe streets being more the infrastructure design, operations of the streets themselves. So the strategies and actions related to that area. Safe people being more about the culture of driving, alternatives to driving, education, campaigns, social media, the engagement piece. Safe vehicles to include city drivers, our city fleet vehicles, technology that's emerging to make it safer. Safety data, so continuing to gather and analyze the data, continuing to evaluate it, and also the reporting out and accountability sort of piece of that. And then we have started sort of separately this safety-focused enforcement to kind of look at the role of enforcement in transportation, safety, where does that fit? What would we want to do as a city around that issue, knowing that we need to grapple with disproportionate impacts and the discussion around traffic enforcement that the community is having around policing? And we didn't call this out, but equity really would infuse all of those areas. None of those areas would be considered without that. And you probably remember from the resolution the amendment to document those disproportionate effects of traffic enforcement, the impacts of traffic injuries and fatalities on people of color, and that the plan would work to not just look at those and document them, but to reduce and eliminate those harms. So that obviously is a guiding force for all of the strategies and actions that we would be looking to develop with the action plan. All right. And then we just wanted to mention just briefly the stakeholder task force. We did have our first initial meeting on November 18th. And after coming here, there was a desire to sort of increase the scope of who was invited. So on the right is groups that we did invite. We had 27 people who were able to attend. And I believe eight of those were from our city staff steering team. The rest were either other city agencies that have not been particularly involved with this effort previously or community organizations. We did also have quite a few organizations say that they did want to be involved. They were not able to make that initial meeting, but they wanted to stay on the list. They wanted to stay engaged with the idea. They were definitely interested. So our next meeting is planned for February 17th and we sent everyone a save the date so that they would have a little bit more time to know ahead of time and be able to make that meeting. And these are a group of people that we, organizations that we feel are pretty vital to the initiative in terms of helping just share the message, get the word out about the safety culture piece of Vision Zero to help guide us as we move forward with outreach and messaging and other strategies. And just to get feedback, I mean, obviously they have knowledge specific to the work that they do that we really need to have inform our work. And as mentioned, quarterly meetings, we want to make it easy for people to be involved. So not having too many meetings, but also knowing these are a group of people that we can reach out to in between that as we want to gather information or get the word out about things. Now, at the meeting, we did ask just a few questions to kind of get the ball rolling, even though this was very much an introductory meeting, knowing that some groups knew what Vision Zero were, but for some, this was a pretty new concept. But we asked just a few questions to kind of get a feel for where people were at. And one thing we asked was about reducing posted speeds because that is something that we know is on the table that we'll be discussing and something that we've already started to do. So we asked, you know, what are the top two places you would prioritize? Reducing the posted speed limits. Lucky, I am happy to report that no one who attended said nowhere, that they thought the speed limits were fine. Obviously, this is kind of a self-selecting group who is interested in issues of this type, but no one said that. People's number one answer was the High Injury Network, which is kind of to be expected. So we wanted them to select a second and in a tie, as the most popular second answer was near schools, business shopping districts or anywhere where the speed is over 35. I think people really, from our presentation, understood the impacts of high speed in serious and fatal crashes. And then after that, there were also support for residential areas, bike boulevards, near parks. So it was really good, though, to see that people were really engaged with the idea of lowering speed limits. And then we also just asked some questions, what do you think would need to change to make it safer for everyone regardless of mode to travel safely? And these were just a few of the things that we heard back, not everything, but just kind of a selection of kind of where people are at now with the first meeting as we start to move forward with this. And so we thought it would be interesting to share that. Just to get a flavor of what people are thinking currently as we move forward. And I think that's our whole presentation and we can possibly go back to the High Injury Network first and then go from there.
All right, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess before getting into any kind of discussion about individual roads, could somebody just speak to kind of how, how we're thinking about using the High Injury Network? So like how, you shared kind of how you came up with it, but what, how would we expect to be using it? What is it? What is it not? I think that would be helpful.
Okay, I'll start on that and really, and Eddie can add to it. That's, that's an excellent question. So, you know, we are creating the High Injury Network, not just for fun. We really want to use it as a guiding framework. So we intend to actually focus our, you know, investment strategy around High Injury Network. You know, especially, especially for the, you know, Vision Zero, dedicated funds for Vision Zero. And it's for first few years, we really want to dedicate those funds to improve safety on this High Injury Network. I don't know, partly the biggest use for that. Yeah, we are also, you know, spending a lot of staff time and also have some colleagues helped analyze the data, you know, do really deep dive into it. We're actually going to talk about that on Wednesday at Traffic Commission. And this, you know, this, this will be our focus as well, as we're developing, you know, projects either through Vision Zero funds or other safety program or federal state grants. So we really want to focus on this network that, you know, cause fatalities and serious injuries. So we really want to make a difference. So we need to have a focus. So that's why we are doing this.
Thanks. And is there maybe just in terms of like other cities, how they've approached it? I think the stat was like 80, 80% of our high injuries from 10% of the roadways or something like that. Is there, is there, do we, like, is there a target that we were kind of shooting for in terms of like, so obvious, so I've highlighted a kind of a few areas in, in blue that stood out to me as like additional corridors where there was, you know, some, looked like some sort of pattern of injury-causing crashes. And actually, after seeing the explanation, perhaps it makes sense why I identified these. I think the approach was the first look at the K A and identify those corridors as the tier one. And then look at the sort of bicycle pedestrian ones separately as the tier two. And maybe some of the ones that I identified were kind of a combination of K A as well as the, the pet bike. But obviously the tension is, you know, you don't want to, you don't have every street highlighted because then you don't really have, you're not able to prioritize. But then you also don't want to sort of miss corridors or sections where we are having a high number of injuries. So any guidance as to kind of what that right? Now, obviously, at the end of the day, it's just a judgment call, but any, any sense of like, is there a target for how few miles or how many miles we're kind of allowed to consider in these networks?
Go ahead, Tom. Yeah, I think a lot of cities have focused on it being data-driven. Because like, for instance, Minneapolis, I think says all of their investments have to be on the High Injury Network. Alder Foster, you serve on the, on the Transportation Commission and also the T V B. And so you know that all neighborhoods feel like the street in front of them is the most dangerous in the city. And then if there aren't reported crashes on that street, then they say, well, are you going to wait for a crash to occur to correct an unsafe, you know, situation? And what that does is that ends up kind of diluting the effectiveness of a targeted, you know, a targeted effort to deal with what are the streets that are killing people? And so I think there's a focus on data-driven. And then I think there's a, there's an effort that it's reproducible, that every year we get a new set of crash data, right? And rather than having, well, what do you think it should be this year? You know, we have a little bit of a methodology that we don't have to qualitatively evaluate what is the High Injury Network, but we can basically have a reproducible methodology that every year we can at least come up with the base network in a repeatable format.
Thanks. Yeah, that makes, that makes sense to me. And I, I think that was actually one of my other questions was, so well, first of all, I'm, you know, very much in support of focusing our, our energies. And I would just say as a preview report out from the Traffic Calming Subcommittee, that that group will be recommending that we also prioritize funds that are currently going in that direction towards, I don't know if necessarily the High Injury Network, but towards improving safety, right? So I think there, there's, I'm very supportive personally, and I think we do need to get more focus around where we're, where we're investing. So this makes a lot of sense to me. I think partly, like even just looking at this map, so I mean, this, this map is all representing data. And there are a number of kind of crash locations that are not, that are designated as fatal or serious injury or bike ped minor, but that are not part of either the tier one or the tier two network. I guess my questions are, you know, to what degree would we, I think you mentioned maybe Minneapolis, maybe having a very strict line saying, no, we are only, you know, investing in things that are on our defined High Injury Network. So kind of my questions are, if we, you know, if you look on this map and there are other locations and if we don't include them with a, with a red line or an orange line, are they then not on our High Injury Network? And what does that mean? You know, does that mean that they wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be prioritizing investments there? And what about like an intersection that shows up here as having issues, but it's not on the quote unquote network? I guess that's what I'm just trying to tease out is, you know, what's the risk of leaving things not on the network? Does that tie our hands from being able to address them?
I'll, I'll mention something and then, you know, Yang's very good at this too. Probably, I'm going to say the council's been very generous and supportive. Probably, I'm going to say the council has been very generous and supportive of providing funding for this. But I'm going to say that there's probably only enough funding. To address maybe ten percent of everything that you see in red and orange, right? And so how do we? Where? Because anytime we put a project. You know, I'm going to use my street so that I don't offend anyone, but. Let's say I I feel like Fair Oaks is very unsafe, right? So it needs to be a target. Well, if every time, if I were to put funding towards Fair Oaks. It takes away funding from another project that actually might have a higher severity. So that, you know, that it's just a balance. It's it's about resources and. Minneapolis, I I don't know. Their original, to my knowledge, their original resolution is that all Vision Zero funding had to be on the. My injury network for three years. And I think they're in actually year three of that right now. So I don't know if they're intending to continue with that or not. So I I could, we could follow up on that.
Yeah, you know, one thing I want to add is that. We, as you can see, our kind of high new network maybe look a bit different than some other communities. We have, you know, connected nine nines, the dealer that's, you know, a network, but we also need to internalize all the dots over there. And connect the dots. You know, we want to kind of convey those. You know, information to whoever looking at the map as well. Not just the, you know, the 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 nines needs attention, but those parts need more attention, but there are also. Dots on the map, maybe separate, maybe isolated, but there are issues over there. You know, we want to use kind of the same man's mind side as we be directing money, but also. You know, we're, you know, working with engineering, for example. You know, for when they make a decision on which street to consider for, you know, major construction reconstruction, for example. Maybe they can use these as a tool as well. So I think, you know, they can pre reference the the lines and also the the dots.
Thanks. And that that is really great to hear, Yang. I guess I would I really support that approach as well. And I think. In my mind, the sort of hindry network in terms of the lines. Seems to call out, you know, longer sections of roadway that have kind of patterns of issues, but I I also do agree that those the dots themselves are very important. And especially when they're, you know, representing an intersection, a particularly dangerous intersection. I would want to make sure that we are, you know, we don't lose sight of of those because obviously that's that's driving the the. Injuries as well. So it's good to hear, you know, I I like this approach of kind of leaving the dots on there as well. I think those are really relevant. So that makes sense to me. I guess just then turning to kind of more of the specific stuff, and I don't I mean, I don't want to go through all of these and why I kind of highlighted them, but. I guess one question I would have just even more in terms of process. You know, so so this is here at the at the Policy and Planning Board, and some of the questions I was. Asking are kind of related to that, like what is? What is our policy around the high injury network, right? How are we defining it? And how are we going to to use it? So I I think we might want to actually come up with. Some language at some point so that we have some clarity around that, because otherwise people will have their own ideas of what it is. And then in terms of like actually approving this network, and I I think, Yang, you said, you know, this is something that I I would hope we're going to. Update on an annual basis, right? We get the we do the new the evaluation. And it seems to me like this probably should be work that the Transportation Commission actually. Does that they would, you know, on an annual basis, they're the ones that's really reviewing the crash data, et cetera. So I'm wondering if we won't actually want to even just refer. This to them and kind of get them in the habit of of looking at it because. I think ultimately they're probably going to be the better body for. Sort of evaluating that more fine level of detail and making recommendations and approving, you know, what that what that network is. So I guess I would just put that out there that we may want to, as as the Policy and Planning Board, we might want to just. Kind of work on some definition around what is the high injury network? How will we use it? How does it apply to, you know, use of of different kinds of funds? How do we incorporate it in our decision making? And kind of set some more more policy definition around that. And then perhaps we send this, you know, especially once we have that. And we could send that to the Transportation Commission and ask them to review and and, you know, recommend approval of. A twenty twenty one high injury network that that then gets incorporated into an annual. Review process. So I guess I'd be interested in other people's thoughts on that, but I would. I think rather than getting into detailed discussions about, you know, some of these other sections that I've highlighted here, I just wanted to to put that out there that maybe, maybe Transportation Commission would be the right place for that.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion, Alder Foster. We actually has been holding back on our. Can annual crash facts report. Kind of hoping that we can add actually high new network to that report every year. So we want to study this year. But obviously, you know, it does take time to develop. Develop the methodology as as part of our first year. So this year we couldn't wait any longer. So we published the the facts report and we'll talk about that at commission. Wednesday. But in the future years, it's our plan to make this part of that. Annual crash facts report. You know, we can definitely, you know, bring this to traffic team commission to get their guidance and input as well. Great suggestion. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Grant. Thanks, Yang. Before we continue, Ian, are there any registered for public comment on this item? I don't have any on my list as of about an hour and a half ago.
Sure or not?
Okay, thank you. The next up is Badri. Go ahead.
Um, I have some basic question here about. The partnering program, the partnering neighborhood. Communities involvement in the Vision Zero, like, for example. When Alder Foster actually highlighted the Raymond Road, I down on me, the half of that road that is turning there. We had several complaints a lot of times because of the gradient on that road. And when we talked to the city of Madison, it said it's managed by Verona. So half of that turn from here on, it's all managed by Verona. So is that like, can we have? Like partnering with funding wise or working with City of Verona or something like that?
That that's a great question. You know, I can try to answer that. I know others on the team. We have thoughts on that as well. We have been working with. You know, our neighboring. Municipalities, you know, different roadway projects. We, you know, for Vision Zero specifically. You know, we. You know, haven't collaborated on any. You know, project, you know, just full on safety improvement from a mission zero perspective. But we can definitely, you know, reach out to them as we do for like construction projects. We typically get a lot of correlation with them. We have constructor, construct a road. I think. We're trying, you know, we have been talking about at the. The M P O, which. All the surrounding municipalities are part of that. We have been talking about it as a Dean County Traffic Safety Committee. So I think, you know, everyone around here knows that we are starting this initiative and we really want to. Make an impact. But I think, right, you know, for our, you know, our roadways have been traveled by. Users from all the surrounding area. And, you know, the road is all connected. So it made a lot of sense for us to work together on on this. So thank you. We can, you know, reach out more. We. We have been working with closely with UW Madison on this. Actually, they are very enthusiastic on this in this. We can work more with others.
That's that's great. Thank you. Yeah. So I just brought up as we're on. I know. We have one board member from Middleton as well in this board, so she can start using it. Thanks.
I'll add to that as as most of the other municipalities don't have traffic engineering divisions, and so they don't have the staff resources. So probably our interaction with the M P O is the most effective way. In incorporating kind of the needs of the other communities.
All right. Thank you. Margaret Bergamini, you're up next. Go ahead.
Thank you. A question, as you were going through the presentation and. Showing what other cities had done, how they had formulated their reports, I noticed that. There's a different amount of emphasis on. Community engagement and education. And. I am wondering. If you could speak a little bit to the specifics of. How you plan to engage the public, not just via the non governmental organizations that you listed off. But at a, you know, more granular community level. Yeah, a lot of these roads are. It's going to be difficult because they're commuter roads, but it comes to mind because. I live in the Tenny Lapham neighborhood, and this has been. Quite the discussion all summer long on the lowering of the speed limit on East Washington. And the 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 loudest voices on this have been. People saying things like, you know, what difference does this make if they're not going to enforce it? We've got to, you know, the. The four decade, five decade long problem with drag racing on the weekends, et cetera. So, you know, I, and, you know, this program is going to make. Our neighborhood streets more unsafe because, you know, people are going to detour, which. Was not an argument that made a whole lot of sense to me, but, you know, it does seem like there's a level of education that has to go on here, both with residents and with drivers and bicyclists and whatnot. So if somebody could speak a little bit more about how you plan to engage on that kind of granular level, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, I'll start again, but I know, I think Renee, I think she has a lot of thoughts on this as well. Yeah, you're definitely right. Community engagement is a huge part of this. You know, the, you know, one of the philosophies that, you know, this is a systems approach, right? So not just the, you know, transport team professionals, but really the users of the system has to be part of it to really create that kind of, you know, safety culture. So we can achieve vision there. We, you know, the stakeholder tax force, you know, that's kind of our first effort. So we shout to a lot of, you know, community organizations, nonprofits. And, you know, other city departments, you know, N R Ts. But trying to kind of create first level of engagement. Eventually, we want to, you know, reach out to more. Can directly reach out to community members. Right now, we do have a lot of challenges with that, especially with COVID. And a lot of things that we initially thought we're going to do has been very difficult. But we're exploring ways. For example, you know, some people argue that. Even though we cannot, you know, engage people in person, maybe, but we we still have online tools to use. And I guess it may actually even work better to reach, you know, some section of population. Maybe not as well as, you know, other sectors. So we're exploring the ways on that. Yeah, we have been developing kind of a, you know, communication plan. And I believe actually that's going to be on this week's kind of vision zero team agenda. Yeah, we have a, you know, a couple of great kind of P I Os are working with us. From a from a city, you know, Kitty Crowley from Mayor's Office and also Kristen. Ruski from Parking Utility. So it's a it's a challenge, but we feel like. We. We'll figure ways to really reach out to to people. In one sector, particularly, we're being, you know. Talking with UW about, you know, engaging the students as they actually, you know, they are a main part of the system. Initially, we had a lot of ideas, you know, although I think we had to adapt due to COVID. But we'll we'll make progress on that. And I'm wondering if Renee, you have anything to add on that?
Sure, I would just add, you know, like Yang said, I would say we're still developing what this will look like. And I think we're. Trying to also just take this in the context of everything that is going on. You know, we have a complete and green streets plan that's just starting off. It also has an engagement component. There's also, you know, B R T, the metro restructure, the M P O is going to be starting their long range plan. And the Dane County Traffic Safety Commission is going to be doing some things. So we're also trying to like figure out how this all fits together in a way where. Residents don't feel like you keep asking me questions that are related to transportation. What are you doing? Why do you just keep coming back? With this engagement? So I think we want to be really thoughtful of how this fits into everything else that's going on. We also want to make sure that we're hearing voices. You know, many of the streets that you see on this map. Are ones that it we maybe haven't traditionally engaged with as well around these issues. So, you know, we're. Like Yang said, we're still meeting about this. We're still trying to figure out how this all works together, but engagement is super important to our work as it is to some of the other projects. So we want to make sure that we are doing a good job with it and that people don't feel like we just come to them and they don't see anything really happening from that. Or we they tell us things that really aren't on the table for for things to change. So. I think that we will be coming back with some more information on this and how it all fits together with the other things that are happening in the city right now around transportation.
Yeah, one thing actually is already happening is that, you know, thanks to Hub from Metro. We put quite a few ads on the bus about the vision there. So as those as those buses going around the city, people are seeing it. It's very eye catching. So. Hopefully, hopefully that helps.
Yeah, and I think we're going to use the data, you know, for that education piece to. Really try to use that to be smart with what we can do around education as well and really. Figure out what are the most efficient and effective ways, knowing that, you know, we aren't starting out with the hugest budget to do the biggest thing. So what are the key components that we need to focus in on?
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Margaret. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I had just a couple of questions on the plan outline side of the presentation. So I guess first question is just what is the? An overall timeline for the plan development? Are we, how are you feeling about the? What's in the adopting resolution and feeling like we're on track or any thoughts on overall timeline?
So. That's a great question. So I think, you know, as this. Goes through the council, I mean, the resolution goes through a council. We can realize that, you know, with COVID, I think the original timeline we want to achieve, that's, I think. June first is going to be pretty hard, especially considering the the part of engagement. So right now, I think the team is looking at the end of twenty twenty one. And I think we're making good progress. You know, all the work groups are are meeting. But I don't know what what do you think, Renee and Ellie? I think that end of the year, end of twenty twenty one would be realistic.
Yeah, I I do personally feel like June is. A little is too optimistic, and I think we had some concerns about that probably from the start. I'm. I think that we will definitely be producing more things, but really to have a final action plan, I do feel like. The end of the year is is more realistic than June.
I mean, I think we can get, you know, bring a pretty good draft of the action plan by, you know, June. Depending, you know, outreach and whatnot. I think end of the end of the year would probably be more.
Thank you. And then in terms of the. Action sections and the the subgroups that are working on that. I mean, it's helpful to kind of divide and conquer and to have different groups addressing those different things. You know, one thing I noticed in in one of the groups is that we obviously want to also take advantage of. Kind of working together and coordinating in terms of things like enforcement and and street design and public campaigns, et cetera. So I don't know if you've given any thought to that, but maybe maybe it's just a suggestion that let's make sure and also think about how. How we're going to have the different. Focus areas kind of work together on things as well and to sort of give updates to each other, because I think that's. That's one area where we might end up having kind of five different groups. Because I think that's, that's one area where we might end up having kind of five different groups coming up with their own ideas. And it'll just be really important, I think, for, to keep those really closely aligned and connected, yeah. And then I guess my, my last one is two things. One is I didn't, I'm not sure where like VMT reduction would go in those groups, but I think that's a really important Vision Zero strategy. So just making sure that that is captured somewhere and that we don't lose sight of that as a strategy and action. And then my last comment would just be, let's give a lot of focus when we get there to the implementation and accountability section. I think historically, we've done just a really great job as a city in a lot of different agencies at coming up with really good documents that lay, that lay out the foundation. And then we sometimes peter out a little bit and are kind of weak on what we're actually challenging ourselves to do. And this is, this is an initiative that really like us to be bold on the action side of things and really specific. So just, just an ask there that we're, that we really take that part on seriously. And thanks for all your work on this.
All right, any further questions, discussion or follow-up from members of the board? All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the action plan outline in the revised High Endry Network? Alder Foster?
Yeah, I would, I would move to approve the action update, but I guess I would like to ask for staff to come back with a definition for the High Endry Network and kind of let some framework of how we will, how we expect to use it. I'd also like to then refer that to the Transportation Commission to actually evaluate the network itself with that, with that framework in place.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Alder Furman, I'm assuming that's the second. See, you had not, okay. Alder Foster, would you like to speak further to your motion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the update and then directing staff to return with the definition of High Endry Network and a framework to use it and then with a reference once that's complete to Transportation Commission? Please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous. And then we'll move on to Legisstar 63242, discuss revised parking purpose and policy tools. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, it's probably over an hour now. And I think there's some people that had registered on the Triangle ones. I know we were waiting on Alder Campbell, but I guess I just wanted to put that out there that we might want to take that one off the table at this point. It looks like Alder Evers might be in favor of that.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to take that off of the table. Can I assume Alder Foster, that's your, please, yeah. Okay, is there a second? Second by Alder Furman. All those in favor of taking this item off the table and taking it up now, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Or we will take that item up now. So then the next item then is Legisstar 63041, amending the Triangle Manona Bay Neighborhood Plan to revise the transportation recommendations for the north-south public street from Regent Street to West Washington Avenue, from ped bike friendly to ped bike only with emergency vehicle access for the north-south section from Regent Street to Braxton Place. I assume all of you have had a chance to review the memo that went out from the Planning Division regarding this item. So staff in this case is recommending or recommending that it not be approved. A little bit of history for Transportation Policy and Planning Board. We took this, the initial neighborhood plan up on May 3rd, 2019. And I looked through our minutes and it indicated that our, our primary concerns were about the street being used as a cut-through. We did recommend adoption of the plan with recommendation that staff look at additional steps to reduce traffic to the extent possible through any new street if it were constructed. And then the discussion among board members primarily circulated around what connectivity actually means. So a little bit of background there for Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Unless I'm mistaken, I do not believe we have an actual presentation. Is that correct? Okay, I'm assuming that's correct. So we're going to go on to then public comments. We have a number of people registered to speak. We will then begin with Gabriel Ward, 117 Bayview, Madison, Wisconsin. The sheet here says, "Do not wish to speak but available to answer questions." I think that might be incorrect. I think she indicated earlier that she did want to speak. So Gabriel, if you are with us and you'd like to speak, we give three minutes per speaker. You may go ahead when you're ready.
Yes, I, I just wanted to speak in, in support of the decision with the redevelopment of the street. Like, that's basically what I wanted to say because I support it and I see kind of the action that they're taking to make it more safer. And so I'm, I'm, I'm in support of.
Thank you, Gabriel. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you again, Gabriel. I appreciate you sticking with us. I know it was a little bit longer than you anticipated when you signed up. Okay, our next speaker then is, our next registrant is Sally Lehner in support, Madison Street, Madison, Wisconsin. Do not wish to speak, available to answer questions. I do not see that person on the attendee list. So we'll move on then to Mary Berryman-Aguard, 133 South Brittingham Place, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak, representing the Bayview Foundation. Mary, you may begin when you're ready, three minutes.
Hi, thanks. I appreciate you all hearing me out tonight. I am the Chair of the Bayview Foundation Board, and we are engaged right now in a redevelopment process which has coincided with the Triangle planning. The Bayview Foundation was a bit ahead in its timeline of the Triangle planning process. And as early as May of 2018, our residents took a very strong stand in favor of wanting pedestrian bike and connectivity on the Triangle and registering their concern or fear about more through streets through that area from the point of view of safety. They've been consistent all through the Triangle redesign process, along with many other CDA residents. So the first thing I'd like to say is there's years of thought behind this that would certainly stand in support of the amendment that is proposed before you. The second thing I'd like to say is my understanding of the key reasons that there was interest on the city's part in making this street a full connection from the Regent to the West Washington side of the Triangle was accessed by emergency vehicles, number one, which, under the amendment, would continue. And also protecting the prospect of the need for greater access should the redevelopment of the Community Development Authority's property in the relatively distant future demand that connectivity. My feeling is that making the northern portion of this street a ped bike and emergency vehicles only street does not foreclose any future use that might come to change the will of the body politic. But I would hope that tonight your board would listen to the will of the residents and support this amendment, which they see as contributing to the safety, tranquility and beauty of their neighborhood in which they have made strong commitments to be participants in planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, I will move on to Alexis London, 1825 Melrose Street, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak, representing the Bayview Foundation. Alexis, if you can hear me? You may go ahead when you're ready. It looks like you're muted, Alexis.
Alexis, you should have a prompt on your screen.
Yeah, hi, I'm Alexis London. I, I was, I think my computer froze for a second there, so I'm sorry about that. I'm the Executive Director of Bayview Foundation, and I've been in that role for about five years now, ever since the start of Bayview's extensive redevelopment process. And I'm here tonight to talk in favor of the proposed amendment by Alder Evers. I'm fully in support of it. This has been a long process that Bayview has engaged about 70% of all of our residents in sort of a rethinking of the Bayview portion of the Triangle in our redevelopment process. But in our conversations with our residents, which have taken place over the last three years and have been via focus groups, door-to-door surveys, interviews and group meetings, we've just heard consistently fears and concerns about having a street that runs north-south through the Triangle, a full vehicle access street. And so that, that's just something we continually hear and I continually am worried about. And every time the topic comes up, residents ask why, is that really needed? And, and I think when I say that, you know, when I try to answer that question, which sometimes I don't have the right answers for, but I do talk about connectivity, the focus then turns to, well, we need better pedestrian connectivity. That's really what we want. What we really, really want is safer passage crossing the big streets of West Washington and Regent Street. And having full vehicle access north of Braxton doesn't come up as a necessity or a priority of the residents that I speak with on a daily basis. So I'm very much in support of this amendment and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next speaker. Doug Hunt, 4234 Savannah Court, Middleton, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak. Doug, if you can hear me, you're up next. You have three minutes and you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. You can hear me?
Yes, I can, yes, we can.
Great. So I'm a lay leader at Faith Community Bible Churches, which is located out the corner of Park and Regent. And I'm speaking this evening just in reference to some of our members who live at the Triangle and to many others who are not members, but with whom we have association as part of our presence in the neighborhood. And I'm aware of the concerns residents have regarding the proposed Connector Street. And so I wanted to just voice my support also of the amendment that Alder Evers is presenting. So primarily what I've heard from residents that I associate with there is that, as has been stated, the street will pose some safety risks for the neighborhood. Does, especially on the CDA side, include a high percentage of individuals with physical and other disabilities. And this proposed, the through-street would bisect the neighborhood, making it more difficult for residents of both Bayview and CDA housing to traverse the area on foot. So if, as I look back at this TMB plan, it is strongly referenced that the Triangle residents already feel pretty isolated because of the heavily traveled Regent and West Washington Avenue corridors. And this street has the potential to introduce more vehicles right outside their front doors. And that's the concern that I've heard from, from folks that I relate to in the Triangle. If, the plan also references that, when they did a study of the methods of transportation of Triangle residents, the, the rate of those who choose walking or bus travel is two and a half times the rest of Madison and that the ownership of cars is actually 14% less in Bayview or Bayview Triangle area than the rest of Madison. So what, a street, a street designed for cars, even if it is bike-friendly, as, may not actually be the best solution in terms of the benefits it would offer to Triangle residents, in my opinion, many of whom can't afford cars and don't drive them. So, yeah, in support of the amendment, I think it does address the need for access to emergency vehicles as Mary Berryman referenced. And I also, again, support the amendment as a, I think, the right compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next speaker. DeWayne Gray, 5212 County Highway M, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak. And if I'm not mistaken, DeWayne was a member of the Steering Committee that crafted the initial neighborhood plan. So DeWayne, if you are there, you're up next. May go ahead when you're ready. Are you there, DeWayne? All right, it's possible that they can't hear us. So we'll move on to our next speaker and then we'll try to come back. So our next speaker then, or next registrant rather, is James Corona, 523 Bayview, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak. James, if you are there, you're up. You have three minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is James. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a resident of the Bayview neighborhood, father of two schoolchildren.
They shouldn't turn off one of their devices. James, if you can. More than one device, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
James, if you have a speaker or another device running, can you shut that down so you just have one? Otherwise, we'll continue to have echoing issues and we won't be able to hear you.
James, if you'd like to try to unmute yourself, let's begin to sit another try. James, can you hear us? All right, well, we'll try to come back to James again. Let's move then on to Jared Pelsky, 735 West Main Street, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak. Jared, you may go ahead when you're ready. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, my name is Jared Pelsky. I was the former president with the Manona Bay Neighborhood Association, as well as the Vice Chair in crafting the Triangle Manona Bay Neighborhood Plan. I, I guess there's a few comments that I'd like to make. Hopefully, DeWayne is able to come back because he was on the board with us. And it was definitely a contested, this road running from West Wash to Regent Street was, was a highly contested and highly debated problem and really a good discussion within the board. And unfortunately, this road extended the planning process by probably six months or maybe longer because the city continued to add this, this road. And the entire board really was wondering why and asking why. And DeWayne, unfortunately, it sounds like he's no longer in the Triangle, probably because that road ran or is planning to run right through the neighbor, or the building that he was in previously. So I'm a little frustrated that the, that this is still a debate. I believe that the, the board really, you know, tried to hear the residents and hear the neighbors and understand why a road was necessary. And even the Triangle Manona Bay Board had requested a special meeting without city staff to try to understand the needs and the desires of the board. You know, and really, unfortunately, at this point, the city seems to have demanded a road gets put in place and really make Bayview pay for it, which is a little frustrating because Bayview had a plan in place when we asked what the CDA and others were planning to do. They said, oh, we're waiting on the TMB plan to be put in place. They said, oh, we're waiting on the TMB plan to be put in place before we develop anything. So again, I think that this should be revisited. I think it should be known that it was highly contested and frustrating to go through this process and not be heard. You know, we were appointed as board members to be, you know, the ears and representatives of our neighborhood and of the neighbors of the community. And we really feel that it was, it was just pushing an agenda that the city really wanted to push, whether we said so or not. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jared. Are there any questions for the speaker? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next registrant. Let's see, Ben Killip, 630 West Washington Avenue, 303 Madison, Wisconsin, in support, not wishing to speak. However, Ben did submit an email rather late. So I will bring that up here and read it briefly. "To whom it may concern, my name is Ben Killip and I am a downtown resident. I am not able to attend today's Zoom meeting to discuss Agenda Item 63041, but I wanted to pledge my support of that amendment. I believe we need to continue to provide pedestrian and bicycle-friendly spaces in our neighborhood. Restricting the use of cars in this area will help make the neighborhood a safer place, both for residents and those visiting our great downtown. Thank you for your time. All the best. Ben Killip." Our next registrant is Nate Shore, 1733 Sawtooth Lane, Madison, Wisconsin, in support, not wishing to speak. So then that brings us back to our two registrants that we had to skip over for technical reasons. So let's try again. Dwayne Gray, I do see you on the list of attendees. Dwayne, can you hear me?
Dwayne, you appear to be, there we go. Let's try that again. One, you were unmuted. Okay, you are unmuted on our end. You may be muted on your microphone. So check if there's a button there.
Dwayne, it looks like you're unmuted. Can you hear us? We can't hear you. All right, we'll go back to our next registrant here and we'll try Dwayne one more time. So let's see who's up. Jump around here. James Corona, 523 Bayview, in support, wishing to speak. James, I see you, you're still on our list of attendees. Are you?
Yeah, we just had a James join.
I'm assuming it's the same.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is James. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a resident at Bayview Neighborhood. I'm a father of two small schoolchildren. I support this amendment. This amendment is a sensible and reasonable compromise that limits access to the northern part of the road between, the part of the road between Braxton Place and Regent Street. And it makes it accessible to walkers, cyclists, and emergency vehicles. It makes it safer for movement, safer movement for these, for walkers, bikes, cyclists, and emergency vehicles. This amendment also is an issue of public safety, as has been mentioned earlier. It makes it safer for residents in the CD, Braxton, and Bayview neighborhoods. So therefore, it makes it safer for neighborhood kids, for the elderly, and we have a lot of elderly, for streetwalking walkers, for people with disabilities, and there's a lot of people with disabilities in this area, and for bicyclists in this area. Also, it makes it safer for those who need to cross the street to attend Kohl Center events, including Badger events. This amendment prevents cars from going 25 to 30 miles an hour on this road, on this part of the road, which obviously endangers the physical safety of people. Finally, this amendment allows for cars' full access on the southern part of the road between Braxton and Regent Street. So I fully support, as a resident of the Bayview neighborhood, I fully support this amendment.
Thank you, James. Are there any questions for our speaker, for the speaker? Seeing none, we will try Dwayne Gray one more time. Dwayne, are you there? Okay, it looks like we're not going to be able to get ahold of Dwayne. I believe that's all of our registrants for public comment. So I think we'll then go to Alder Evers. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Sure. Thank you. And thanks to the residents and folks in the neighborhood and the folks at Bayview Foundation who spoke up, and thanks to all of you for listening. Two years ago, during my campaign for District 13 Alder, I began attending the steering committee meetings for the Triangle-Manona Bay Neighborhood Plan that's been referenced. It was that, those committee meetings over nearly a two-year period that generated the final neighborhood plan. And it was during that steering committee process that staff pushed initially for a return to the grid system that was originally in place on the Triangle when it was part of the old Green Bush neighborhood. Staff seemed very intent in their call for connectivity, but they defined connectivity specifically in terms of automobile access. Residents, as has been mentioned during the public testimony tonight, pushed back, not wanting anything resembling a grid and worried in large part that adding automobile traffic to the Triangle would result in reduced safety as well as a loss of privacy. The final approved plan included just one new street, not a grid, a north-south connection between Regent and West Washington. Residents reluctantly and with much reservation agreed to the street, concerned that it will invite use by drivers seeking a convenient shortcut through the Triangle. Bayview residents in particular have voiced concerns over and over again that this new street would put the large number of children in their community at risk. The proposed amendment would limit the northern half of the street from Regent to Braxton, limited only to pedestrians, bicyclists, and emergency vehicles. This section could be, this is a suggestion, not, you know, I'll leave it to the engineers to decide, but it could be built at grade without curb and gutter or sidewalks, offering enhanced placemaking potential and spaces for public art and creative landscaping, excuse me, creative landscaping. As you know, staff has opposed this amendment, and they returned to the theme of connectivity. Quoting from the staff report, "Enhanced street connectivity will allow the Bayview Community Center to be more welcoming and accessible to the public, facilitate safe and efficient travel to housing for residents and visitors, and provide opportunities for additional parking and improve emergency vehicle access." I wish to comment on this part of the staff report. Allow me to note that Bayview residents have not clamored for this street as a means of activating their community center, nor has this sentiment been expressed by the Bayview Foundation Board on which I sit. In fact, I'm not aware of anyone and Bayview's leadership team, a team which is highly committed to resident engagement, to getting input and feedback from every resident in their community. I've heard no one suggest that vehicular access from Regent Street is needed to make the community center more welcoming or more viable. It appears staff is projecting their own concerns onto Triangle residents, as evidenced by additional remarks in the staff report, and I quote from the report. "While many people express concern over the possibility of a new street on the Triangle, some shared that it is difficult for visitors to get through their homes and that they wish that there are more ways to get into and out of their neighborhood and that there was more parking for residents." Some additional input expressed during the planning process that the Triangle-Manona Bay Steering Committee and city agencies considered while drafting plan recommendations include, "The grid-street pattern that the Triangle had over 60 years ago seemed to work better than the current layout of the Triangle. If we bring the street grid back, it could slow down traffic. Also, at least bring back a cross-street to help better distribute traffic. And thirdly, possibly add one well-designed street that is safe for residents and provide good access and provides good access and connectivity." Now here's what I want to say to that. That's quoting from the staff report. I was not at every steering committee meeting, I'll admit. But I went to several and I've spoken to members of this committee and others who were intimately involved in the process. And those who I've spoken to are consistent in their assessment that this is projection, that staff was not responding to community concerns when they recommended the new south street. It's fictitious. It seemed rather that staff sought to impose their concept onto the plan, independent of community feedback. The amendment that I've proposed allows for increased connectivity, as staff defines it, and that Braxton Place would no longer function merely as a cul-de-sac. Vehicles would be able to enter the Triangle from South Park via Braxton or from West Washington via the new street. The amendment also allows for increased connectivity, as the neighborhood defines it. All along, there's been a difference in how one defines connectivity. Staff defines it in terms of vehicular access. The residents define it in terms of human connectivity. Limiting the northern section of the street in between Regent and Braxton would provide additional recreational space for residents, adding a strong dose of health and safety considerations to a very diverse community. There are over 100 children at Bayview. The CDA apartments likewise serve a high-need population of elderly and disabled residents. Here's where I'm going to conclude, but this is important. If we are in fact committed to framing our decision-making around sustainability and equity, we must stop emphasizing vehicular access over and above the needs and interests of our most vulnerable resident. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Are there any questions for staff or any of our speakers from members of the board? Just to note that there are several members of planning staff here in attendance. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear from planning staff why they're opposing this amendment.
Sure, I can start, Alder Foster. And then I would also defer to my colleague Linda Horvath, who's here as well. I, you know, this is a tough position. No one wants to be in this position as staff advocating for a street when residents don't want it. I think it's a common situation, not unheard of, certainly. Excuse me, my son's bringing my dinner. Thank you. Okay. So I wanted to lead with that and then to say that I definitely have a lot of respect for the Alder and the residents who have spoken this evening. And we do hear loud and clear, and we did through the planning process for many residents, that the street with automobiles was a concern for safety. And I think that in the plan itself, and this body did a lot of work on this element of it, the street is supported in a very bike-ped-friendly way. You know, the design of this street, I think, as noted in the plan, would really elevate pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, but still allow for automobile access. And that's what I think we feel is most important when we're not only listening to the residents who live there today, but also envisioning the future tomorrow when we think about the redeveloping Bayview site and the redeveloping Community Development Authority site to the west of this street. You know, many of the residents who live, especially at the CDA property, I'll say, they may not drive, they may have a lower vehicle ownership rate, but they rely heavily on things like deliveries, like the arrival of service providers, et cetera, that could be so much better served on a small, very low-traveled local street than it can be directly from Regent Street or West Wash. And so I think that's something that we certainly consider. We also considered, as the memo laid out, the developability of the CDA site in the future. You know, these decisions about how the CDA will redevelop have not yet been made. I think it'll be the next couple of years that they'll be really laying out a very carefully thought-out phased redevelopment of that site to support existing and new residents. We do think that if we have this street and it doesn't allow for automobile access for residents, deliveries, visitors, service providers, et cetera, that will necessarily result in more impervious surface on the CDA site itself. And so we, you know, just did one concept of kind of being able to show the internal circulation that would be necessary on the site absent vehicle access on the low-traveled street. Again, I think there are ways that this street could be designed very carefully to really minimize use by automobiles that aren't in some way related to the residents and visitors to the site. Again, this is a tough position, definitely respect Bayview and their input throughout the process and the Alder's proposed amendment. But I think, you know, given where the plan stands now, I think from planning staff's standpoint anyway, we feel that maintaining this at least until such time as the CDA has fully explored their redevelopment options, maintaining this recommendation to at least allow automobile access would make sense because I think it's a lot harder to make a decision in the other direction. You know, in a couple of years, if we realize we absolutely need this for the CDA, I think that's a pretty difficult decision. It certainly is possible, as one of the speakers mentioned, but we've seen that scenario in some other parts of the city and think that what makes sense now is to move forward with a very narrow half-street as Bayview redevelops. We're very excited about that redevelopment. And then hold and wait until, wait until we know more about the CDA redevelopment just to the west. So I think those are the main points. And then I would certainly defer to my planning colleague Linda Horvath, or I know we have also staff from engineering and traffic engineering here as well.
So I'll jump, I'll jump in.
I have that.
Hey, oh, is that okay?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, sorry, I couldn't hear very well. Yeah, so thank you, Heather, for those comments and thank you too for all of the community input now and throughout the planning process. This was a long, challenging process in a lot of ways. The Triangle is a very cherished place by people who live there and it's definitely a very desirable place as well, right across from the Bay. It's a wonderful place and staff spent a lot of time sitting and listening to residents and their concerns, you know, sharing drafts. We were in the lobbies of all the CDA buildings at Bayview Community Center over a six-week period, talking to individuals, had those 16 committee meetings outlined in the memo, the phrases that Alder Evers was referring to in the back of the memo that comes right from the minutes of the steering committee. We started the process by looking at background of the Triangle-Manona Bay area, and of course, there was a street grid system there back in the 60s. And so we wanted to share that with the committee and say, hey, you know, we don't know what property owners want to do yet. We had yet to do our interviews with them. Yet to do a lot of the outreach at that point, want to open it up. How do you see this area changing over the next 10 to 15 years? How would you like it to change? And subsequently brought a number of different drafts before the committee over time that included probably two or three streets after that in the beginning and came down to the adopted plan recommendation you see today based on all of the various input from property owners, healthcare property owners along South Park, who plan to redevelop over the next 10 to 15 years, CDA, which again, will probably double those units at Gay-Braxton and Bayview as well. So it definitely was a process where we heard, we did hear, as we outlined in the memo, concerns by residents, and you're hearing them tonight again. Automobile traffic is a scary thing. If it's, you know, not, if the street isn't designed well, but we do think it could be designed well to calm traffic and calm concerns, ride-in, ride-only. Talked about very low speed during the planning process. Could it be 10 miles per hour even? Could it have a tabletop at Braxton Place intersection? So yes, we do still feel like having that full automobile access, vehicle access north-south would be preferred. So, thank you.
If I could just follow up then?
Go ahead.
So, I mean, so part of the-
I mean, so part of the description was we're trying to plan for an uncertain future, where today we have relatively low car ownership by current residents. Like broadly, our work here seems to be trying to plan for a future that has less dependency on motor vehicles. I'm struggling to understand why we kind of be going the opposite with this proposal or with the rejection of the amendment. And I guess it was mentioned that this would be much better served for deliveries, et cetera, that you just said, well, maybe we could eliminate some of the problems by having it be ride-in, ride-out only. I'm just truly, really struggling to understand what we're gaining here. Like, so instead of a delivery going down Park Street and coming in on Braxton, they could drive down Regent and take a right into this new street? Like, how is this such an advantage that would overwhelm all of, everything we just heard from everybody that actually lives there and everybody that's in a leadership position, trying to represent those that live there? How is this such an important thing? I guess I'm really struggling with that.
I think, again, the CDA redevelopment layout is unknown. What we included in the memo is just one concept, but thinking of if, you know, if there is a building that faces and is really oriented to the new street, having that, you know, front door nearby delivery is perhaps, you know, more important for some of the residents there that have, you know, are differently abled in many ways. I think that it's just an important consideration. I think that this body will certainly consider it fully and think about the connectivity, the access, et cetera, and make a balanced decision. And so I think it was just important for us as planning staff to reiterate all of the conversation that happened during the planning process, the strong commitment to making this a very safe pedestrian-bike-friendly street, but the reasons that we think that vehicle access is still indeed, and I won't say vehicle, bikes are vehicles too, automobile access is still important for deliveries, for the residents that do own cars, and for visitors who are coming to see their residents. So I think not hemming ourselves in with this decision at this point while the CDA embarks on a phased redevelopment process over the next couple of years, in planning staff's mind, is the best decision at this point. And so I think, you know, that's where we're coming from.
Thanks, I have a question for, I guess probably for traffic engineering staff. So along those lines of safety, I mean, we saw earlier on the high injury network, so this triangle is actually framed by all red lines, so all tier-one, potentially tier-one high injury network roads, Regent, Park, and West Wash. I know I was contacted during this process, or, you know, half a year ago or more, when residents were really concerned about pedestrian connectivity across Regent Street, their ability to get even just to the bus stop on the north side of Regent Street. And I think we're feeling frustrated that they were not, that was, they were not getting a lot of success in having a plan to improve that. One of the things that seems like an answer for me would be a sort of mid-block ped bike crossing that, you know, could be RFB or something. If we put an all-access road in here with motor vehicle traffic, wouldn't that really just compound issues and introduce all these turning movements across a potential pedestrian crossing of that block? I mean, as I'm, just from, I guess, from a safety perspective, wouldn't a limiting the motor vehicle access there and focusing only on ped bike crossings of Regent, wouldn't that produce much safer conditions than having motor vehicle access and all the turning movements that come along with it?
That is a great question. So actually, the staff person who is the most familiar with this, he's not here today. So I'm trying to kind of answer that question. You know, Renee from traffic engineering has some thoughts on that as well. That's definitely a great point. So I think there are pros and cons. And Alder Foster is correct that we have been working with the neighborhood, improving, you know, crossing of Regent Street over there for the neighborhood. You know, it's a very challenging situation over there due to the geometry of the street, basically it curves over there, and, you know, high traffic volume, and also some, you know, visibility issue due to vegetation under the curve. So, you know, we do look very, looking to introducing a mid-block, another mid-block crossing over there very closely, you know, where the bus stop used to be. You know, we can, yeah, we can simply mark a crosswalk, but, you know, our concern is that, you know, without other improvements go with it, it's not safe enough, especially, you know, if these are used frequently by kids to cross through over there. So we really want to, you know, provide a better solution for that, instead of just, you know, mark two lines, call it a, you know, call it a crossing. So I've been working on that. And, you know, regarding the question, you know, whether a street will make it safer or worse. So it's a, I think it's a bit complicated. You know, first, the access, I think, in the current neighborhood plan or special area plan, is not a full-access intersection. It's a ride-in, ride-out. So typically, you know, if it's a full intersection, there's a lot of, you know, conflict, a lot of movement. So ride-in, ride-out, like basically eliminates most of the conflicts. But Alder Foster, you're right, there's still going to be some conflicts from pedestrian crossing. On the other hand, you know, a bigger opening does bring, you know, more attention to drivers that, you know, there's something going on here, so you need to pay attention. You know, that's kind of one of the problems right now, because there is not a kind of visual cue for drivers that, you know, they see that this might be, you know, activity area. And, you know, also the curb and the vision issue, you know, right now is not ideal to put a crosswalk over there. But we do actually have a plan to putting a crosswalk, you know, when a project can be done here, to improve it. You know, the initial plan, you know, when the, when the, when we thought the street's going to be there, is that we just build on it, the street, make it a kind of more visible intersection, and we're putting a crosswalk and making improvements in the medium as well. But we can also, you know, work with a, you know, with a different design. You know, if it's, you know, that industry just serves CDA, or it's a ped bike corridor, that stuff could be better than what we have now. And we feel like, you know, we can work with the neighborhood to continue to explore ways to add a crossing over there. You know, in terms of RFBs, we have another RFBs really close by at Canvas Mall intersection. So typically, you need to want to put the two RFBs, you know, very close by. Actually, those actually would be some city issues, because sometimes you get confused, you know, which ones, which, when they approach. And, you know, Campus Mall, you know, for a long time has been defined as a major ped corridor, you know, from, actually, from lake to lake, from Lake Monona to all the way to Lake Monona. So it may make more sense to, you know, keep the RB over there, but we can evaluate, you know, whether we can relocate that one, if, you know, if there's a strong case for that. So, yeah, I guess that's kind of a long answer to the question.
I guess just specifically, Yang, so if we're, you know, again, future world, we do something that we, as needed, to make a ped bike crossing, let's say it's only ped bike access for this stretch, that versus having it be full motor vehicle access or ride-in, ride-out motor vehicle access, I mean, just quite simply, isn't allowing for those turning movements of the cars going to introduce more conflict potential than not having those turning movements of the cars at that pedestrian and bicycle crossing?
Yeah, again, you know, there are pros and cons. You are right on that. So from that, from the conflict standpoint view, you have less conflict. But from kind of call attention from a driver's point of view, you know, a street actually kind of highlight that, you know, this is the intersection.
Right, but if it were a, if it were a ped bike street and marked appropriately, et cetera, you could still accomplish calling that out. You don't need motor vehicle access in order to visually change that.
Yes, that's what, you know, I was referring to. We can still work on that, but, you know, our original plan was to build a crossing with a street. Doesn't mean that we cannot look into it with a ped bike only street or a very narrow street, just share the, just serve the CDA with that end, maybe, you know, very short after Regent Street. So there are options. But I think it's, again, there are pros and cons. One is that, you know, we can get rid of the conflicts. One is that, you know, whether we want to create more activities, provide more cues for drivers, that, you know, this is an area that they need to slow down and watch for things.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Alder Foster. Tom Lynch, you had your hand for a while, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to provide maybe a little high-level addition to some of Heather's comments. First, I want to just mention that these are kind of nuances, right? You know, is it a ped crossing or is it a motor vehicle north-south street? I think if you were to take, or if I take a couple steps back, really, we're planning neighborhoods not for the next 10 or 20 years, but for the next 100 years, no, really. And so when we look at our most successful neighborhoods, neighborhoods in the city that have been around for 100 or more years, a lot of them just are characterized by shorter blocks, grids, that kind of distribute the traffic, you know? And so these are not huge differences. I can appreciate everyone, all the commenters that provided testimony, but just looking at the 10 or 20-year, generally, when you look at 100-year, what are the successful neighborhoods that have been around for 100 years, and what are the types of characteristics they have? Often, they have grids, shorter blocks, decreased traffic speeds, and the like. And so that's just more of an augmentation to some of Heather's reports. And also, I think what Yang was mentioning regarding kind of interrupting that long block that's on Regent, really kind of, I'm going to say, enables or maybe encourages a little bit of speeding on Regent as it goes around that curve. So that's it, thank you.
And maybe one thing I want to add kind of on that is that we actually have been working with Metro on, you know, eventually, you know, make the, you know, the kids pick up or, you know, school much better. Instead of picking students and kids from Regent Street or West Washington Avenue, maybe they can be picked up, you know, from some internal streets, so the kids don't have to cross Regent or West Washington at all.
All right, thank you, Tom, thank you, Yang. Chris McHale, you're up next, go ahead.
Thanks. I was just wondering if anyone could speak to, what is the standard procedure for amending a neighborhood plan? Because it sounds tonight like that there was a lot of public opposition to what ended up in this plan. I would feel uncomfortable if there were plenty of folks who supported the plan wholly and things got changed sort of covertly at a board meeting.
Well, I can take that one, Chris. I think, you know, we, our standard operating procedure really involves, for amending an adopted plan, just involves a final decision by the common council. And so in this case, the council elected to refer this to not all of the original boards, committees, and commissions that reviewed the plan when it was adopted last year, but the ones that pertained, I think, clearest to the nature of the amendment. And so that's really this body, the TPPB, the CDA, and then ultimately, the Plan Commission serves as the lead on all plan adoption processes and plan amendment processes. And so this will go to the Plan Commission for a final recommendation before it goes back to the common council. And neighborhood plan amendments, they originate, usually they originate in combination with a development request, quite honestly, and that's not the case here. But usually, they originate in conjunction with a development that maybe isn't quite consistent with the plan, but is something that the alder and staff can support or at least move forward as a consideration. And, you know, generally speaking, it's usually a land use recommendation that's changing. In this particular case, again, this, as Linda mentioned, this issue was, I think, one of the probably main focus areas in the adoption of the plan. And we definitely knew that there was a lot of opposition to it. Ultimately, the steering committee and the boards, committees, and commissions did approve the plan. But, you know, this issue is coming back, and it's a very focused amendment, right? This just pertains to the northern portion of a new north-south street. And so, you know, alders are more than welcome to bring forward plan amendments, and that's what happened here, really. It's an alder listening to constituents who are in the midst of a redevelopment, you know, embarking on redevelopment of their site at Bayview, and this issue is arising again. And so, again, for this particular amendment, it'll go to the, to this body and then the CDA Plan Commission and on to council.
Thanks. Can I ask one more, maybe of transportation folks?
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm kind of thinking that, kind of thinking of this from a transportation commission perspective, interpreting plans when the project finally comes through, which is, I think, where this will end up. And I'm not really seeing the plan as precluding the types of design that I think we're talking about here. Am I misinterpreting that?
I could take that if, I don't know. You know, I think in this case, the Transportation Commission will be heavily involved in the actual design of the street, but it was really clear, at least at the staff level, in the plan, that this body and ultimately the Plan Commission and council adopted the plan with this street to be designed for multiple modes of transportation, but for, especially with the safety of bikes and pedestrians in mind. And so we felt that rather than it going to the Transportation Commission to basically design out automobiles, that a plan amendment was really needed first in order to kind of set the policy direction for that change. So depending on the plan amendment, I think the Transportation Commission will still have some flexibility, certainly, in the details of the design, but this is sort of the opportunity to make, to make either a new decision or to reinforce the original decision made last year when the plan was adopted about the modes that this connection will support.
Thanks, that was helpful.
Thank you, Chris. Badri, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, to me, the picture makes more meaning. So I just wanted to see if we can see what is actually in the plan, what is the amendment, what is actually, is there any alternatives? If you're voting on something today, I just wanted to have a clear picture of what are we voting on?
I can show my screen, would that be helpful, Chris?
Go ahead, Tom.
And maybe I'll attempt to describe this, and I have this here, this is probably the best description. The current plan right now has this north-south roadway. Uh, the current plan right now has, um, this north south roadway. Primarily for bicycles and pedestrians, but allows motor vehicles. And, um, the red represents fire lane access. And the right is the proposed amendment. And so you'll see that, uh, this becomes just a pedestrian bicycle way. Uh, it does, uh, have areas for the fire, a response parking, but it, they have to access it by removing some ballers. And then as far as a turnaround, it has a, um, an additional set of, uh, street right here. Heather, maybe, or Linda, maybe you could add any annotations that you think need to be added in my description?
No, I, I think that's perfect. Again, it's just changing the, um, intended modes for the northern portion of this new street.
Mm-hmm. And I would just add that the, the plan does go into more detail on how this street could be designed potentially in a much more pedestrian, uh, friendly way with right in, right only at the Regent and West Washington intersections, narrowing up those entrance, entrances as well, potentially with bump outs. Um, and maybe doing a tabletop where Braxton, uh, intersects with that new north south street. Um, also wide sidewalks, because we do know, as was mentioned earlier, there are people with mobility needs that do, uh, travel around the area with walkers and wheelchairs. And, um, so that's also a concern is allowing two wheelchairs to pass, um, on a sidewalk that would have to be wider than normal sidewalks.
Did that clarify your question, Bodri?
Yes, thank you.
Um, while we still have this up, I, I just want to point out what was something that was mentioned earlier that what you're looking at, building A and building B, that whole section is, I think, CDA property and that that is actually not part of the AV redevelopment, which is currently being planned, which is all on the right of Street A. The two buildings shown here in the two different scenarios are hypothetical. That design has not been created yet. Am I correct in that? Or if I'm not, correct me?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
People will think that that's actually part of the, um, actual AV redevelopment plan, which is also the right of Street A. Um, okay. To get back to a view that I can, uh, I can see hands, I think Alder Foster, you're up next. Oh, you were up next. Um, see, your hand is down. Uh, we'll go to Eric Sunquist then.
Yes, um, thank you. So on, on the CDA redevelopment potential, currently there are CDA buildings there that are occupied, but, um, this road doesn't exist and they are, you know, they're occupied. So, um, is it just, is the notion that we need a road, uh, full auto accessible street there to serve that parcel better than is currently being done? Um, because it, I mean, it's being done now.
Yes, I, I think that's a good question. And I think in short, the answer is yes. I think the, the CDA, you know, one of the buildings actually, um, is in the pathway of half of the street. And so that the street won't be able to build, be built in full, um, for several years and until the, the CDA property actually does redevelop. Um, right now, if, you know, the one sort of internal street inside that whole triangle is, is Braxton Place, the cul-de-sac of Braxton Place that, that exists today. Otherwise, it's, you know, of course surrounded by barely highly traveled streets. And I think this is one way to introduce a more humane, um, slow and low, uh, travel street within the interior of, of the triangle. I think for the CDA property, it's going to be a street that, um, new buildings can orient to, similar to the way the Bayview, the new Bayview Community Center will orient to the, the southern portion of this street, close to West Washington Avenue. In a way that, you know, today it's completely insular to the site. Um, the buildings don't really orient to streets. Um, this is a, a new opportunity for, for that. And I think that Baby's taking great advantage of it with the placement of the community center, uh, on the southern portion. I think we're, you know, looking to keep, um, and the CDA will speak to this more in a couple of weeks or in next week, but looking to keep options open for, um, orienting new buildings to this street and allowing them to be accessed, um, more easily without needing to basically replicate or recreate all of the circulation internal to the site.
Okay, so just like the, the specific benefits would be, I mean, orienting to the street is great when the street's already there, but creating a street in order to orient to it when there are, they're sort of oriented to courtyards and things like that. Um, I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm not sure that's a, sure what the, the precise benefit of that is.
Well, I think one, one potential benefit as shown in those two pictures is the difference in, you know, the impervious surface on the site itself. You know, if, if there is this north south street connection constructed, but it doesn't accommodate automobiles, then the CDA will need to accommodate automobile circulation internal to their site, which, as we noted in the memo, could limit their choices with regard to stormwater management and usable open space, um, at grade. Again, these are just early concepts that we're showing here now to kind of address that, that potential issue. But I think that's one, um, that's one thing that we, we see as, uh, just again hemming the, the CDA and CDA into something before they've really had an opportunity to develop their redevelopment strategy.
Okay, thanks. And what's like the minimum needed? Do they really need a two-way street to orient to or could it, like, uh? So for example, just not far away is the Lucky Building, which is partly fronting on, um, library or East Campus Mall. Um, and East Campus Mall has cars on it sometimes. Um, they have cars on it in the section that goes next to the, um, the surf or whatever the surf is called now. And, um, the, the Lucky Building and the, and the celery hall. Sometimes, you know, when move in, move out day, there are cars there. Um, there's cars pretty frequently on that, but it functions more like a sort of a woo-nur. Um, it's not, doesn't really read like a street. It's, but the people who need to go to the ice arena or whatever it is, or, you know, they, you could still have auto access. So is, could CDA make do with something like that? Maybe even just a one-way across something that reads more like a bike pad facility, but has, but really would just be for local access to that parcel?
I guess I, I can't speak for them, but I think that's a really good idea to explore further, particularly if we're limiting access to this street period to a right in, right out. It might make sense to, um, limit that portion of it to a one-way going south. I, I'd better not put my traffic engineering hat on since we have traffic engineering folks here to, to speak to that. Um, but I think, I mean, I think that's an interesting idea.
I mean, if it were a one-way going south or north, like, doesn't really matter, that would take out half of the turning movements that Alder Foster was talking about. And then the crosswalk could be on the other side so that there would be no conflict. Um, but you would still get maybe the more higher visibility, um, of a, a real intersection that Yang was talking about, um, and still only have a handful of cars using it. Um, and so, I don't know, that, in this discussion, I'm, so, I don't, I'm going to shut up and listen to other questions, but I'm just, I'm sensitive to like what staff is, is saying here. And I think they're, um, have been fighting good battles on connectivity. Um, I think we lost one that maybe was unfortunate over by Oscar Meyer. But, um, but I don't, it, as, as of now, I'm not seeing the need for a two-way street as originally sort of documented here, it just to serve the purposes that we're talking about. So maybe that would be a way forward.
Thank you, Eric. Um, are there any additional, um, questions? For staff or attendees? We still have several of our attendees on the, on the call. All right, seeing none, is there a motion? Alder Kemble, go ahead.
Move adoption.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Alder Foster, I see your hand raised. Is that a second? Okay, Alder Kemble, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, I would, yeah. Um, so this body made our policy statement on our original recommendation on, on the plan. And that was to restrict traffic here. So I don't know, um, I mean, for me, why wouldn't we just adopt this? Because that was in fact our original recommendation, uh, when, when we looked this over. Um, and it's my, my, my continued, um, opinion that, you know, we should support this. Um, since it didn't get through on the original, but it was, you know, after much study and questions and, and looking at the issues, um, it was our recommendation. So I will be voting yes for this. Um, and I'll just, you know, some of the discussion, um, is a little confusing to me. Um, like you can't have a one-way street that's right in and right out. So some, like some of these, some of these ideas that are being floated around, um, just don't make sense. Uh, but I think we should stick to our original recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Kemble. Uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
You, um, I'll also be supporting this and I, I agree that, you know, when we, when this plan came to us originally, we were very much on the side of, I, I forget what the exact language was, but it was basically do whatever we can to discourage and limit and restrict, especially cut through traffic. We didn't, that was, that was part of an overall plan and we, it wasn't our job at the time to get into the weeds on that. And, you know, I, I think there was broad support for that statement. Um, I think Chris brought up before, like, is, is the current plan, does it even prohibit or prevent a no motor vehicle access street? And I mean, that's kind of how I looked at it originally as well as, I mean, if you look at what the plan says, what it doesn't say, and what our original recommendation was, I would say a, a, a cross-section without motor vehicle access actually is completely consistent with the plan. There was nothing in the plan that explicitly said there needs to be car access through there. So I, you know, I would have been content leaving that up for Transportation Commission to work through. Clearly, there's a difference of opinion of what the plan does say and what the intent with the adopted plan was. And so I think Alder Evers' amendment here is to clarify that. I don't think there's been a change in the feedback from the public on this issue. Um, and it, you know, it's a little bit disappointing to hear that they, you know, hearing some of the members of the public say that the city was pushing so hard for this thing. But the city, I mean, apparently it's, it's some, some staff, but I, you know, I don't remember this board pushing in any way to increase motor vehicle access through here. Um, you know, I, I think the, the neighbors are on board with the, the new full motor vehicle access to, from Braxton to West Washington. And that will on its own, uh, improve access by motor vehicle significantly into and through the, through the site. But I honestly, the, the value of maintaining motor vehicle or actually creating motor vehicle access from Regent into here just has very, very little value. And, you know, the idea that, well, we, we should just have it there in case to keep options open for redevelopment of the CDA. I mean, that also honestly just does not carry any weight for me. I mean, you, we, we can do anything we want with that space. Well, if, if you want to build a new street coming in, why don't you just build a new driveway off of Regent into that development then? You can have, you know, have the cars come right off of Regent and go into the basement of, of that new development or however you want to do it. So, you know, saying we need this new street so then we can have a different driveway coming from a new building that doesn't exist to that new street, you know, it just, it doesn't add up. Um, and I think, you know, the thing that really gets me a little bit worked up here is, I feel like we have such a simplistic understanding of connectivity and it's been used and used and used, and I would say abused. And this reference to like the traditional grid pattern, there's a lot of value in that. There, that's true. There's a lot of reasons why that, that system has created sort of livable communities and these like really cul-de-sacs neighborhoods that grew up in the eighties and nineties. Yeah, there's all kinds of issues with that. But the idea that motor vehicle access equals connectivity, we have to get away from that. We have to break that. Every single place in the world that is actually moving towards a, a future that's not so car dependent is doing exactly what we would be doing here, which is limiting motor vehicle access. And it's even, it's things that we do here. I mean, think about the diverter on, on Jenny Street or on Oak Ridge. Does the Marquette neighborhood and the Sassy neighborhood, did that become less connected? When we said cars can't drive through here as a shortcut anymore? We recently added a diversion on the Mifflin Street, so cars couldn't turn onto there so that we'd have less cars on the Bike Boulevard. Did that diminish the quality and the viability and the connectivity of Tenny Lapham neighborhood? Um, you know, I, State Street, taking cars off of State Street and act, I mean, we, we just blew up the connectivity there. Like now you can't drive down there at all. Did that act, did that reduce connectivity? I mean, we, we have to separate these things and we have to stop going toward this overly simplistic, simplistic idea that the best thing we can do in any case is put in as many graded streets as we can, have full motor vehicle access. Cause the reality is, whether it's Barcelona with their super block systems or, or what any of the, of, of large cities that are, that are grappling with the reality that they cannot depend on motor vehicles to solve their transportation problems, they are all doing the same thing, which is getting rid of parking to make it more difficult to park cars in places and reducing motor vehicle access. Like that, that's what everybody is doing. And so I don't know what it's going to take for us to get a hold of that. But that's, that's the direction that we need to be moving in. And this idea that we need to cut up blocks and let more cars get through them is just really opposite. And I, I, it's frustrating to me and I, you know, I apologize for expressing that frustration, but I just, there's some really good principles that, that I, I understand are trying to be put out here. But we need to get some more sophistication around this and we need to stop connecting motor vehicle access with connectivity, because those two things are, are very much different. And in many cases, allowing motor vehicle access into places like this will disrupt and will destroy connectivity for humans. It's, it, it is really true. And I, and in a place like this, when we hear so clearly from those that live there that don't want that, that have no need for it, and saying, well, we just gonna, we're going to push it through there anyways because maybe people in the future will want it. I mean, we need to take a pause and take a breath and rethink what, what we're doing here. And so I, I very much support the amendment. Let's get it clarified, um, and let's, let's listen to people and let's, let's make this triangle redevelopment a, a good one that doesn't have to be penetrated in every direction from cars. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Margaret Burdamee, go ahead.
Yes, I want to first thank the members of the Bayview community, uh, or, and the Bayview Foundation uh, for coming out today and expressing, uh, their point of view of how this process worked and this particular street design. And I also want to thank Alder Evers, uh, Evers very much for proposing this amendment. Uh, and for Alder Kemble, reminder of the comments we made the last time we saw this plan. The first time I saw some kind of street punched through this neighborhood, I think had to be in the late nineties or early two thousands as, um, a continuation of East Campus Mall. It is a way to connect the university from lake to lake. Um, I think that the people who live there now and the kind of folks who, for whom this neighborhood has been designed have expressed that, you know, in a way, this is, I, I, I know we're all, I know that it's kind of, um, fastful now that cul-de-sacs are undesirable. This is probably the most desirable cul-de-sac in the city. The purpose it serves, the function that it has served has precisely been to facilitate connection between people, as the alder expressed. Um, and you can, you can see it every time you go into that neighborhood. Um, it's one of the most inclusive neighborhoods in the city. And I don't see that this, um, street would improve the neighborhood, improve safety. I think it would do quite the opposite and I hope we all support this amendment.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Eric Sunquist, go ahead.
Um, so first is just maybe a point of order or question to the chair or to whomever. The only thing attached to Legisdar is the staff memo. Where do we find the exact, what are we voting on? What, where is the amendment?
I can speak to that.
Go ahead, Tag, or go ahead, Alder Evers.
It's, uh, the memo, I mean, excuse me, um, the file itself, the be it, the therefore be it resolved is the amendment itself. If you go to the file and read all, all the clauses, you get down to the second half of it, the specifics of the amendment are there.
It's on the staff memo, what, what page?
The text in Legisdar, Eric.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm not as, I should be more schooled at looking at Legisdar by now, except everything at Plan Commission is attached and I never really look at the text on it. Thank you, um, um, so to the, to the specifics, um. One thing, I don't think it's that confusing between options of right in, right out in one way, they're two different things, uh, we're exploring options here. Staff mentioned right in, right out, I mentioned one way, so that clears that up. And I think we've got to be really careful about, um, meeting needs of everybody, we're, this whole notion that people versus vehicles is fairly ableist. There are going to be people in the CDA and already are, and, and, and everywhere, who need vehicles. They can't all walk, they can't all take bikes. We have to, we have to, we have to be more sensitive than just that. Um, and I, I agree with Alder Foster on 99% of everything ever that he's ever said. But I just want to point out that using State Street is a good example, there are cars on State Street. Plenty of cars on State Street, we didn't ban cars on State Street. You can deliver stuff on, to businesses on State Street in a vehicle, you can pick up people in an Uber or a Lyft or a taxi or a bus. There are vehicles on State Street. So that's what I was trying to get at in trying to accommodate the potential needs or the real needs of people who are living there or may be traveling through there. Uh, so I, I'm really not sold on banning vehicles entirely from this corridor. Um, I think there, that there are good compelling reasons to allow limited vehicles through there and there are ways to do it in a way that would be very safe, just like State, State Street for pedestrians, but also allow people who are differently abled to have access to the vehicles they need or to the service the, the, uh, the building, so. Right now, I'm not, not sold.
Thank you, Eric, uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
I just wanted to clear up that 1% for Eric and, and see if I can sell him, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I'm certainly not suggesting that we don't need motor vehicle access for, for anybody. And I think that, I mean, as you pointed out, the, the current design facilitates that. I mean, right now, we have, the only motor vehicle access we have is in and out on Braxton. The adopted plan, and I believe the, the plans of Bayview, which they're supportive of, includes a, a brand new full access connection for motor, motor vehicle that will make, uh, Braxton no longer a cul-de-sac. But instead will now be a connection that goes from Park Street to West Washington, two-way, full motor vehicle, full access. This is only for the, the small section that was imagined that that could potentially continue north and connect up to Regent Street as well. This amendment is saying we don't really need motor vehicle access in that small little stretch. And the reason that for me, that's so compelling is because that absolutely would eliminate much of the cut-through traffic. For me, there's no question that if you have that connectivity there, you're going to get that cut-through traffic, and I know, you know, staff has said, well, there's all kinds of things we can do. I mean, we're wrestling with this on the Traffic Cohmings Subcommittee, we deal with it at Transportation Commission, as alders, we hear this all the time. We're constantly fighting like crazy to try and reduce that access, to try and limit that, and it's not easy. I mean, sure, we can put speed humps in here, we can, we can, you know, limit the amount of movements. But if we have, if we allow motor vehicle access through there, it's just way too valuable of a little cut-through. And particularly when you've got Badger Game Days and everything else, you're going to have people that are swarming around downtown, trying to figure out where they're going, and they're going to be driving through there. And if there were some really strong value to that, if, you know, without this connection, if it required people to just, you know, take an extra five minutes to drive around to get where they need to go, okay, maybe it's worth doing. But particularly if we're getting down to a place where we now only have one, you know, one movement, let's say we've got a, a right in and it's a one-way. Well, then again, we're talking about a, a motor vehicle being able to travel on Regent Street and take a right on this new street and go south. Instead of going down Park Street South and taking a right and coming in on Braxton. I mean, there's just like literally no value in doing that, and there's a, and there's a lot that we lose. So I, the only, the only argument that really carried any weight for me is this idea of keeping options open for the CDA and for redevelopment. And again, you know, there, there are a million opportunities of how we can redevelop that, and none of them require a new street connection on the east side of that property. And quite frankly, it's not, there's nothing to say that that's going to, that, that's in any way a benefit, I mean, you, in an abstract, you can say, well, more options if there's another street there, then we can sort of think about different orientations of buildings. Oh, they've got frontage on Regent Street, they've got frontage on Braxton. You can have an access lane just like is there right now, you can pull one off of Regent if you really want to get access from there. There's just no, to me, there's no compelling reason to add this in there for some future unknown and, and imagined CDA redevelopment, when we can just deal with the site as it is and come up with a great concept for buildings that will work for CDA that don't require this, this little piece of road. So I'm not saying that everybody should bike and walk everywhere. Everybody in this location, every resident there will have access to the services they need, will be able to get picked up, people in wheelchairs will be able to get picked up wherever they want to go. This is simply about not opening up a small section to, that would, that would definitely allow a fair amount of cut-through traffic. And so it's, it's really just balancing those, those two things, and to me, it seems really clear where the scales lie.
Uh, thank you, Alder Foster, Chris McHale, go ahead.
Thanks, so I'm, I'm pretty conflicted on this discussion, partly because of process um, and partly because of the reasons that Eric mentioned, I'm not convinced that closing this, this road to traffic is necessarily the right idea. Um, that said, I think I have to support it, um, for a couple of reasons, I mean, I, I, I would actually look forward to having this conversation that we had tonight somewhere like Transportation Commission, where it feels like it belongs. Um, however, um, I don't know that I'll be on Transportation Commission when the time comes, so, you know, this feels like my time to weigh in. And, and as a member of Transportation Commission, I look to the neighborhood plan as my cue for where values lie and where the stakeholders feel the right decision is, so if the choice here is between a, uh, the two-way street as it is designed in the plan now and what we're talking about in the amendment, then I, I, it, it makes sense to put the, um, the, the amended version in that plan now. That's all.
Thank you, Chris, um, any additional discussion? Seeing no hands raised, um, on the motion to recommend amending the Triangle Manona Bay Neighborhood Plan to revise the transportation recommendations for the north-south public street from Regent Street to West Washington Avenue, from ped bike friendly to ped bike only, with emergency vehicle access for the north section from Regent Street to Braxton Place. Um, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Oppose, no. The chair believes it's unanimous, if you would like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, thank you, everyone, thank you to all of our attendees who are still on the call, I appreciate you hanging in with us this long, and for all of the staff members who have been in the call as well. Okay, that brings us to, bring my, sorry, here I dropped my, uh, agenda. Oh, come on.
Policy and, and policy tools.
Thank you, Tom, I'll, I'll pull that back up, but we'll, we'll go to their, um, give a presentation for that.
Uh, I have, uh, a discussion and just the handout that I can share.
Okay, go ahead.
And also, Sabrina is here as well, Sabrina has been wrestling in her mind for four years about all these nuances, the parking policy, and I think I'm just fully understanding the, um, the various aspects to our parking purpose and RP3 and RPO. Um, we've been working pretty diligently, um, with SSTI and others on developing a TDM plan. But it's become very clear that we can't, um, really implement a TDM plan unless we couple it with, uh, a robust parking policy. And so, uh, when we discussed the parking policy at the, I'm going to say Plan Commission Workshop, um, we kind of, um, discussed what our current ordinance is and does and what are the tools that we could do within our current ordinance and within the current state statutes, and, um, Alder Foster was at that workshop, as was, you know, Commissioner, Board Member, Sunquist and the like, and Alder Foster says, I'm not sure I even agree with the purpose that's of our current parking purpose, that's been really in effect for about 50 years. So that's kind of led to a, just a discussion of what should our parking purpose be and what should our park, on-street parking objectives be. And, and I'm going to liken this to kind of a walk, let's say you take a walk from your house and you go around the neighborhood and oftentimes in that walk, you end up right exactly where you started, right? And that could be the place, uh, we should, you know, as we investigate the parking purpose and the tools that we can use to implement that purpose. Legal aspects of, um, of it may end up that we will remain with the RP3, our current RP3 and RPO system. Um, but I feel like, um, there were enough, um, questions asked at the Plan Commission Transportation Workshop that it, um, warranted a discussion, so we brought this discussion to you, um, last week, um. Let's see, um. Excuse me for a second, I'm going to, um, close a window so that I can, um. This is, yeah, there it is, okay, um. So, this was the handout that was provided, your, your packet, uh, we excerpted a, our current parking purpose that's associated with the on-street ordinance uh, that focuses heavily on, um, preserving on-street parking for adjacent residences for the partial exclusion of commuter vehicles. I also, we also included, um, I'm going to say a questions asked memo from the Attorney's Office prepared in 2016. That basically said that we really had to kind of maintain our current RP3 and RPO, uh, programs unless we wanted to change our purpose. And if, um, we changed the purpose of our on-street parking program, then we could explore different ways to implement the program. And so based on a, a discussion that we had and emails that I received from our last meeting, um, staff kind of developed perhaps a, a different purpose that could be investigated, now, this would be contingent on reviewing this against state statutes and could we implement this, but the, the idea is, is that maybe if we have a different purpose for our on-street parking, then we can explore different tools, uh, to regulate on-street parking. Um, particularly with the RP3 and the time limits, so, um, the purpose of Madison's residential permit on-street parking program is to manage on-street parking to support Madison's transportation objectives while providing adjacent land use, parking according to need. Um, so that ties into, I, I think, um, Chris, um, really focused on, um, this is really a management issue, so we wanted to catch that in the purpose, and then these bullets kind of represent our outcomes, I don't know if they would be in the purpose statement or not, but, um, but the idea is that businesses' uses would be able to access on-street parking according to need. Underparked businesses and older developed areas would have priority to on-street parking, the, the idea there would be, um, parking is really necessary for, uh, businesses, you know, on Monroe Street and Williamson Street and the like. Um, residential uses, access on-street parking according to need, again, the idea is that, um, I'm going to say, you know, residential neighborhoods that have been built from the 1950s on have generally tend to have ample off-street parking. And so their on-street parking isn't as great a need, however, generally neighborhoods that have been constructed prior to 1930 may have very limited off-street parking, you know, um, just because cars weren't necessarily a thing when the homes were constructed. Um, access to transit system is accommodated. Um, the idea here is that commuter parking is not fully prohibited. I had a, a very long conver, a relatively long conversation Friday afternoon about, uh, the residents in the Hill Farms area, and they, you know, there's different feelings on uh, should commuters be able to park on the street and board a bus, and some feel like that's totally not justified. Some feel like that's a city asset and could be leveraged, um. Personally, I, I feel like we, we probably have, you know, a thousand, 2,000 people that, that do this, you know, that park on city streets and and then act, you know, board a bus. It's probably a, a least expensive parking right that we could really construct, you know, if that's a viewed as a city asset. And then, um, we also have, uh, TDM measures are supported. The idea that, um, paid or limited off-street parking is not undercut by free or on-street parking. The idea here is that in our TDM plant plans over the last couple of years, we've asked developers to unbundle parking, which means that every, um, you know, resident will be required to pay for their parking separately. Well, you know, some of those residents feel like, well, I can get parking on the city street cheaper than I can uh, in my building, so I'm going to do that, and that's not really what we're trying to encourage, you know, by, with our city parking program. So there's a variety of tools to investigate, but I think I just would like, um, board comment on the purpose and these outcomes, are these within the target that, um, the board feels is where we want to pursue, or are there omissions or additions? You would like to add?
Comments from board members, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks, Tom, for presenting that, um. I think I like kind of where it's going, um, a couple of questions come up for me when we talk about like business uses and residential uses, um. I, you know, I think I, I'm supportive of the concept that for in areas where there is limited off-street parking, that we could use these programs to, um, that we could use these programs to provide some kind of preferential access for those properties. Do you imagine that being like on a sort of business by business and residence by residence? Or is it like, oh, in this neighborhood where we have a lot of kind of, you know, broadly limited off-street parking, then all of the residents there would have preference? Or do you have to sort of show needs? So if one, one home has a garage and long driveway, are they going to also get preferential treatment for on-street parking because they're in the neighborhood? Or is it sort of, are you imagining it to be more granular?
I'm thinking it might be more granular. I'll give some examples. You know, the Hill Farms area is a probably a neighborhood that was built in 1950s or 60s, right? And most of their driveways are about 40 feet long. So they can store, and they can be double wide, so they could store three to four cars, you know, off the street, right? Conversely, if I were to go to Alder Heck or Alder Rumple's district, perhaps closer to Capitol, you know, some of those homes were built before cars were a thing, you know, and so they, the residents there really do need their car, you know, an on-street spot. So you know, we could perhaps regulate this by kind of a graduated permit fee, you know, that if you have off-street parking, your parking permit costs this much. But if you don't have off-street parking, your parking permit costs this much. You see what I'm saying? We could explore these types of permit options if we want to make a differentiation between perhaps providing more access to on-street parking to those residences and businesses that have more need. This is kind of based off of something that Charuvi, this was a study that Charuvi had done, and I believe it was Toronto that does it this way. Eric, do you remember?
I am sorry, I'm not, I don't recall what you're talking about.
Yeah, Charuvi in one of her literature searches or pure city searches found that one one of the cities, and I believe it was in Canada, allocated their parking according to the need of the residents rather than treating them all equally.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it certainly, broadly, I like this a lot more than our current policy for sure. I, there's a lot of questions that come to mind in terms of like how we would actually administer that, et cetera. You know, one of the things that I had mentioned that I'd like to be part of our strategy is I do think we should, I think incentives should have people store their cars on their property when they can in areas that are highly parked up. So, you know, if you think about Jennifer Street, there are, are, you know, apartments there, you know, relatively high density, and if they're all single people now have a car, it can be a challenging place to find a spot if you don't have access on your, on your land. But then there are other properties where they have long driveways that are not, you know, they're not putting their cars there. They've got other things in their garage. And so if, like, one of the things I'd like to be part of this is to not, is to make sure that the incentives do, you know, have folks not just take up a spot on the street because it's more convenient when they actually do have alternatives, then they're just sort of wanting to use their private property for other stuff and not put their own car and then sort of claiming hardship and need in order to park on the street. So I guess that's just sort of a question. Another question is around sort of business use and how limited or broad that would be. You've got business use and residential use, so I'm thinking of things like school. So that's one of the uses that came up in like West High neighborhood and that has created a lot of the RP programs out there is residents wanting restricted access so that students and our staff are not using it. So is that, you know, would we consider a school use a business use? Or is that something different? And do we not want to prioritize that? It's sort of a question and then just kind of, I guess, any other, you know, other institutional uses, et cetera. Like, are we, are there, are we, are we really limiting it to something specific, I guess, is my question. And then in terms of the TDM measure question, I mean, this is a really interesting one. And I know that's like a big part of why we're trying to take this on and to figure something out so we can move forward with that. You know, we had a conversation recently with DC Department of Transportation and they, the representative there actually spoke and Eric was on this call, but he left before we got into this question. And he said that they really, from a policy perspective, do not in any way sort of separate out and create kind of two classes of, you know, here are like the original residents and the single family people that get access to on-street parking, and here are the new development apartment dwellers that don't. And, and even as far as not quite prohibiting, but really discouraging even use of conditional use requirements that do the same thing. And so I, like, that one's, that's just one that I get sort of the importance and the value of it. But I just, I guess I kind of wonder, like, so in Alder Heck's district, you know, where sure, there's not a lot of just free parking, sitting around or available parking. What, like, I still struggle a little bit with why would, why would sort of somebody who owns a $400,000 home have more right to park their car or cars in the street than someone who's a resident? And I mean, the answer, I guess, is, well, if the apartment folks have access to structured parking, that they can do that. But I guess, I guess that raises for me this big question of like use of pricing. And so I don't see in here like that we're going to be using pricing as a primary tool to manage that supply and demand. And I think I would, I would feel more comfortable about sort of giving preference and giving access to different user groups based on need if that, if access to that parking permit were managed with realistic pricing so that you are, so that, you know, it's more of a question of if you really don't have somewhere else, sure, you can get a permit, it's not going to be 30 bucks a year, that it's actually is going to cost, you know, more closely approximate the actual cost of doing that. And so I guess hopefully or ideally, you could start to get to a point where people are making decisions about whether they want to pay for parking in their building or on a lot somewhere or on the street. And maybe those are, you know, not exactly the same amounts. But, I mean, everybody that's got cars that they need to park somewhere should be, should be paying in some way to do that where we're spaces at a premium.
Yeah, so you jumped ahead to tools with the pricing, I'm just saying that. I think you touched on a variety of things. I'll talk about two of them. One is, you know, why should residents of the galaxy not be allowed to purchase an on-street permit but someone else who's lives in a house able, are able to purchase an on-street permit? And that's due to that commuter proxy interpretation of the law that allows the city to do that. So if we move away from commuter parking as being our major purpose, then both the person that lives in the, in the galaxy and then the person that lives in the home next to the galaxy are kind of on equal footing. And so, you know, that's a consequence that we would investigate and that's a very good distinction. Okay? And then as far as you mentioned schools and you know, you asked me what our preference was during schools, but I think I'd almost like to put that back on you. It's, you know, my kids went to East High, right? And so, and I know Alder Bedar has questions regarding West High and that, you know, with West High, she feels like not allowing some of the students to park in the neighborhood is, is an equity issue. And, you know, there's, there's truth to that, you know, Allied Drive is a fair ways away from West High. But then you know, residents near West High don't want all of their streets filled with, with students. And so what is the board's thoughts on institutional uses such as schools?
Well, I guess I got muted, so I think for me, if we can really come up with a strategy like heavily using pricing with some sort of ability to prioritize different users that really have, you know, genuine needs, I would rather than keep the use question more generic. Like, I don't think we should necessarily distinguish that much. I mean, basically use, use pricing as much as we can so that those who really have a strong need will pay for the thing because, you know, whether they, because they live there and they don't have other options, whether because they work somewhere or they're students or whatever, you know, or they're a business that has very limited, that they're going to pay, you know, somehow pay for access for their customers, like however we do it, that to me seems like a really important starting point. And if we did that, I wouldn't want to exclude school or other institutional users by sort of type of use. And then I guess just to your equity point, that's the other thing I was going to mention is I'd like to talk more about clearly if we do lean heavily on pricing, what are we, are we limited, you know, via state law? Or can we, to what degree could we then offer subsidized reduced price or free, you know, passes so that we're not making those disparities worse by leaning on the use of pricing?
So if I were to summarize what I think I've heard from you, Alder Foster, is that the, the need portion of the purpose resonates with you irrespective of use, whether it be residential business or or institutional. And then
Mute her even honestly, I mean.
Yeah, okay. And then, but you do like pricing, the idea of using pricing to do it. And so these were some of the tools that we were going to ask our, the attorneys to see what we could do in various locations if we were to change our parking purpose. And so they include, the first one's very complicated. I shouldn't have led this off with a complicated one. Actually, I didn't put, this is a Sabrina and Eric thing. Establish permit metered parking only restrictions in residential locations where commuter and transit parking user demand are high with low demand for on-street parking from residents, which would allow any member of the public, residents or non-residents, to park in these zones. All right, so that is so long that I'm going to ask Sabrina to please unmute herself and explain that sentence.
Sure. So when we talk about, you know, tools that we have for managing uses for this program, the residential parking permit program, it's pretty restrictive in terms of statute, which is that we can give preferential treatment to residents to park on streets adjacent to their home. That's really about it. And there are a couple of other exceptions in terms of how we can provide preferential treatment for specific users with rate of ways. So ADA, car sharing. So, but in general, we would not be able to legally say that we're going to designate on-street parking by permit for X number of transit users, for instance. We can't differentiate. So with this permit program, really all it allows us to do is give residents preferential on-street parking to the exclusion of everybody else via a permit program and restrictions. There are ways that we can try to address uses through how we restrict those residential permit programs. So, you know, time limit, the two-hour time limit restriction RP three, for instance, does allow some short-term parking for commuters or visitors to businesses. So what this is, and again, this particular one would need to be investigated. This would be essentially a separate program from the residential parking permit program, which would just be permit parking program where anyone in those who wants to park in those locations would be able to do so, so it would not be designated for a particular type of user. But it would require a permit for, for anyone to park at those. So basically metering without physical equipment, it's more metering by signage via permit program. In part, we don't want to put meters in residential neighborhoods. They don't want a bunch of meters in their terrace. And two, we wouldn't make adequate revenue in metered locations to really even to pay the cost. So it wouldn't make sense financially to actually put in physical meters. So that's sort of an option where we meter via poster, posted signage essentially. And in issue permits, residents then with a residential parking permit perhaps could be exempt from those with their RP three permit. So that's the idea. Again, it would need additional legal review.
So the rest of the bullets, I don't think I'll go through them individually, but to just note, Alder Foster, your concern regarding need, you know, allocating on-street permits in proportion to the amount of on-street parking associated with the parcel. You know, limit the permits related to capacity. Some of our RP theory districts have, you know, double the number of permits sold for parking spaces available. Then increasing the cost of on-street permit with each successive vehicle. So these are some of the tools that we would like to actually just request that the Attorney's Office provide an opinion and does it fit within the state statute? If we, it sounds like the broad theme that I'm, we're hearing is we would like to allocate on-street parking according to need, not desire. And that we would like to use pricing as a primary and, you know, motivator tool to, to regulate that. And so with that, we might perhaps retweak this to make sure that we capture the content that you, that you wanted included here. And then we'll ask, you know, I don't know, we might have a six-week break where city business is relatively a little bit slower and we'll ask the Attorney's Office how many of these tools we could implement and how we might implement it. And I think perhaps we, if possible, we'd like to provide a report perhaps to the TPBB sometime in January and then maybe even recommendations a month or two later. That seem reasonable path forward?
Just for Tom, were you asking a question of Alder Foster? Of the board?
For the board, I'm just just kind of declaring our probable intent based on this document.
Okay. Chris McHale, you're up next. Why don't you go ahead?
Thanks. I did not have time to digest that last request, Tom, because I had some earlier thoughts. So back to those. I also like the, the according to need concept. And I think you're already thinking about ways of what that means. But I think, I think currently there's, we've recognized that there is need for on-street parking in, in areas that were built up without off-street parking, like Tenny Lapham area. And so there is clearly, there are folks living there that don't have any other alternative. But we've kind of, I think in some ways, taken that to sort of extend that across the city and say any resident can get parking that needs it. So I like ideas like, like pricing, pricing each car additionally. I think those are good mechanisms to get at that. And if possible, maybe limiting the number of permits per parcel or per parcel area or something like that. So, you know, it's not just like a sort of free for all. So that was one of my thoughts. And then back in the, the sort of new goal section, the first section, I was just, we keep coming back to this a little bit, that it seems like it's not explicit here, but this program really is a lot about facilitating this program really is a lot about facilitating infill development, right? So a lot of people, a lot of neighborhoods get residential parking permits so that the new development doesn't encroach on their ability to park. So if that's true moving forward, I feel like that should be explicit. And in that, in which case, maybe where you say it's to support Madison transportation objectives, that's kind of too narrow because we really, this, this program is meant to support a much broader range of objectives like development.
Well, can I, I want to ask you a question. I was speaking with someone last week and there was a new development that came into their area that created a parking need. And then they, they made their street RP three because they didn't want those people parking in front of their houses. But this is a relatively, you know, it's a post-war neighborhood, so there wasn't, there's enough off-street parking. So really, they kind of created an RP three district just so that people would not park in front of their homes. So are you referring to something like that or what are you, you help pack it a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, also like new, the, the whole idea of new, large new developments not being eligible to RP three, I think that's the, that's the motive behind that. So I mean, I don't, I, I, I'm kind of conflicted about that as a policy because of this, like who's, who, who has the need? We tend to default to people who have been there as opposed to people who are coming in. But on the flip side, it, it's necessary to get the development that we want a lot of times. But that's the, that's the tension there.
All right, I, I, I get it. So, and I, so basically, I'm, I'm going to restate this. An example is the Galaxy, perhaps, you know, the Galaxy creates density in a walkable, relatively walkable area on corridor with high transit frequency. So it's exactly what we want. But the neighborhood may be very apprehensive about putting in that kind of density because they're afraid the residents will compete for on-street parking. And so we don't want, we don't want new development to be so, Odeya said, no new infill development gets approved. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, right. Yep, that, that's it. Yeah. So that would be, that was actually the example that comes to mind for me too, where that was kind of a necessity to make development possible. And maybe there's a better way of approaching that where we don't assume that, that all the existing residents, you know, own the street, but maybe, you know, some limited access to, to the parking such as permits per, per, per building or something like that. And then new development could fall under the same rules potentially.
Yeah. That's an interesting, that's a very, that's a good, that's an intriguing statement. So that's a, so somehow put in the purpose. We encourage sustainable development patterns, maybe, or something like that. All right.
Yeah. And, and then under the tools, I feel like at some point when I was reading this earlier, something suggested to me that there was a, something about giving residents access to metered parking, or was I maybe just reading one of these wrong? Is that a thing, allowing, allowing residents to use metered spaces? Or no?
She's still on. Sabrina, did you log on?
No. So I think that's in reference to not necessarily, right, giving access or residents access to metered parking, but in locations where there is perhaps not a high need for resident parking, where they have off-street parking available, but where there's other demands. So in locations where commuters or transit users or others are, are competing for those on-street spaces, and there may be some residential need as well, rather than designating them as, right, residential parking permit program, which then would lead to empty unused streets where transit users and others have no access to those. You know, exploring a, a method where we create a permit-only program that is not specific to residential, it would be open to anyone. So it would be equivalent of metering in, in the sense that it's a paid parking location via permits that could be purchased, but that it would be open for any member of the public to, to purchase those and have access to those spaces.
So that's just the PPO and I misinterpreted it. Okay, thanks. That's all.
Well, actually, I think it's a little bit, it would be, it would allow, let's say, a resident that lives in Alder Foster's district to purchase a permit in Alder Rommel's district. You see, so that's kind of a
Yeah, I get it. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, Alder Foster, you're up next. Go ahead. Thanks. Yeah, I, I like a lot of what Chris had to say on that. I, generally, I really, I really love the concept of the PPO and really feel like that should maybe be the kind of the foundation sort of starting point. And it sounds like we potentially have the opportunity then within a PPO area, you could also issue residential permits, or we could give like preference to issuance of permits that are, that work in the PPO area to residents based on need, demand, et cetera. So if, assuming that's sort of correct, that would be my preference is to sort of start with the base assumption of we have a limited resource here, anybody that, you know, needs it slash wants it can pay for it. Well, you know, we, we have that available, but we control the supply and the demand with other factors, like if you live there and there's no good options, maybe you have a, like you have an ability to make sure you get in and get one of these before they're available for general purchase, right, from people in my district or something like that. I, I think part of what we should be doing with this program also is getting rid of the hunting permit issue that's been described by some alders in the, in the more in-demand areas. So we should, you know, really manage the number of permits that we're issuing so that people aren't in a position where they have a permit and don't have a place to Harp. Sabrina, is it true that with a PPO program then, that the pricing is not limited to just the cost of the program like an RPO is, and we can use it more like a, for a parking meter where we can, you know, use pricing to, to adjust supply and demand, that it's not just, or is it still limited by only the cost of the program?
That's a great question. I think that's something that's on kind of the list that we need to explore because I think, you know, ideally commuters, for instance, might pay a permit fee that would be comparable to, you know, parking in an off-street, you know, downtown parking facility. You know, perhaps we could give a different rate for transit users to encourage that, or maybe automatically get one if they buy a monthly pass. So I think that's something we, you know, certainly want to explore, but I, I don't know at this point whether we'd be allowed to do something like that with pricing.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great to, to learn more about it, maybe in that same conversation, asking that question about our ability to subsidize, like based on financial need as well, and if there's any issues with us doing that. Because I do think that we really need to be thoughtful about that question, whether it's for residents or others, you know, we can have a sort of demand set price broadly, but then, you know, to the degree that we can identify specific needs that we want to sort of accommodate differently from that market system, that we have the ability to kind of give preference, both in terms of making sure they have first priority to get permits, as well as potentially having a reduced rate, or even if it's a separate program where we can reimburse or however it needs to happen. But I, I think those would be important elements of that. And then I think lastly, to the, to, I think the, what Chris brought up at the end, and I know Eric, this is, you know, been a big part of what he's been trying to make sure we address with this as well, that, yeah, that question of we need a, we need a policy that's not going to get in the way of infill development. And I think, I think that what I would say is let's, let's get a program and a policy set up that accomplishes that, but that doesn't do it explicitly by saying, new development, you don't have access to this resource, you know, existing residents, you do. And I think, but just based off, you know, looking at this list, that there are some ways that we can get at that. But I do think we have to, I think we're going to need to take a bold policy statement as part of this that really does, that, 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 that takes on that assumption of, no, I should have exclusive access to the curb in front of my house. That it, you know, that, that has come up in a lot of different projects and in a lot of contexts. And I think, I think we need to have a clear policy statement that that's not going to be our policy moving forward, that yet still does make sure and provide accommodations so that people don't, don't have real issues when they're in a, you know, in a, in a situation, if they're in a place where they really don't have a lot of options. So I think as long as we develop a program that accommodates those folks, we should aim to do that, but not, I'm, I'm really not supportive of a, of a sort of explicit creating two different classes of residents or even, you know, anything beyond that. Thank you. Thanks, Alder Foster. Eric Sinques, go ahead.
So these are all super helpful to hear as we're moving forward. And I'm glad that the issue of not including infill housing came up. Thanks for, Chris, for making that clear because that, for me, that was so clear that we didn't even write it down when we were going back and forth on this. And just to, to add to it, it's not always that a yes or no on infill development that, that people will, you know, be anti-infill development and it won't be able to happen. Often it'll just get burdened with more off-street parking and so much that it may never even be used, but just to make people nearby feel like they're going to be held harmless for the, you know, the street parking. So that, so there's that as well. And that may or may not kill off the infill housing or just make it attenuated and less good. And I, and I, just to the point that, two points here, kind of taking off on where Grant was last, I think there will really be some cases where we don't have an easy trade-off that there, that there are places, say on Langdon Street in that area where the hunting permit situation really does exist and there's desirable infill. And there's not enough room for even the deserving people on Langdon Street right now don't have off-street parking of their own. And so there's going to have to be some kind of accommodation there, some trade-off. Maybe there's other places where we can take some slack out of the system with the pricing and the second car costs more and things like that, which we've been talking about. I think we can probably make some headway there. But there are going to be places where it's just going to be straight up, I think, there's just not enough parking on Langdon Street for your new 200-unit building to have any parking. And maybe those will have to map that out place by place, but I, and, and maybe that won't be that many places. We shouldn't have like the outlier case rule of the whole program, but to just, I think we should just be, just, I've seen enough of these come through plan commission that there are going to be some, and they tend to be the ones, it may only be one in 100 cases, but it's the one that keeps you up all night with 100 people testifying. And then, you know, bad things happen because it just, the sausage gets made in a bad way. So, and then the other point I would like to make that isn't really in here either, but has come out in a lot of the discussions. And, and I, I am one of the people who totally agree that the people, you don't own the street in front of your house. My neighborhood gets used for people who drive and park and walk over to Monroe Street and take the bus, and I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm not my street, you know, whatever, and I have a driveway. So that's fine. There, there are issues that come up and we should just be ready to deal with them and maybe say, we don't care, or we care but not that much, or we care and yes, we should do something about it. Where the issue isn't, I own the street in front of my house, but there's a bunch of people driving around looking for parking in front of my house, and that's a traffic hazard or, you know, whatever. It's the Gates and Brovi question. Again, it's not a super common thing, but it, it's not uncommon either. And so there, there are places where people have resorted to RP three, even though they have enough parking, it's not a parking conflict per se, just a, a, it's a travel around for parking conflict. So anyway, just highlighting another wrinkle in whether we care about that or not would be, you know, people want to weigh in on that, be maybe useful at this point or down the road.
All right, thanks, Eric. Any further comments or discussion on this item? Right, Tom, do you feel like you got the feedback that you were looking for? Please at this point?
Yeah. I have to find the unmute button. So I think we have, good now, I, I want to reemphasize that this is perhaps like taking a walk from your house. And now we're going to explore this different purpose and then these different tools. But once we have the attorney review all this, we might end up back where we are, you know, with RP three and RPO as it stands because of, you know, state statutes. But I feel like it's worth the walk to understand there's a reason where we are, you know, where we are. So, so we're going to explore this vigorously over the next six weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any further, last call for comments or discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. I'll move on to our last major item of the evening, Legisstar 63243, Madison Department of Transportation Climate Effort Update.
Yes, this was, I think, requested by several that we have update. And I think what prompted this was an article that was in the State Journal about two months ago. And so this, this provides just a little update and a little bit of background on that article and what we're doing to address climate goals. So can everyone see the, my slide change? I just want to make sure. Yeah, okay. So this was something that was in the State Journal, Chris Hubbuck did it in October, said Madison's not on track to meet the climate goals, study blames lacks building standards. Then the State Journal had this graphic that showed, you know, what, where we are, what the average is and what the maximum points are. A lot of this is based on what the ACEE. And so I talked with Stacy Reese from the Sustainability Committee, and she's actually glad that ACEE rated us, that I think originally they only rated states, and this is the first year that they rated cities. When they were asking for information was in the spring and our sustainability director wasn't able to provide all of the data for the request. I think that, you know, the first time you provide this data, it's a big lift, right? Well, I think Stacy was involved in the election. I don't know if you guys remember that election, it was a big lift as well because it was COVID and we had remote voting and all that. And so, so the city of Masson wasn't able to provide them with the data they requested. So they, they used what was available or what they could find on the internet to provide their rating. They use a 2011 sustainability report as a base instead of the 2018 100% renewable report. That being said, uh, you know, our sustainability director is planning to provide them data next year. But it, it may not change our rating that much. She said, even if we're able to provide the information, some of the rating we cannot control during the, due to the current Wisconsin billing codes and the inability to enforce stricter codes. So this little sheet is in Legisar, and so you can see what they rated us and how they rated us and where they rated us. Uh, if we focus on, um, kind of the, the purpose of this board, transportation, that's a little slice of the world that we can kind of control. There's two major ways that transportation can affect our, uh, climate goals. One are the internal measures and then the second are external measures. And so if we look at the internal measures, in the hundred percent renewable Madison, which focuses really on internal measures. It talks about street lighting upgrades, electric buses, and then the passenger car, green fleet and the passenger car, the electric vehicle procuring. If we look at how our city divisions or agencies contribute to the city's emissions, uh, signals and lights, uh, contributed about eight percent of our carbon emissions, metro about nineteen percent and fleet about fifteen percent. And this is straight from the report. I'm going to say that, um, um, we're doing well as far as LED street light replacement. Yeah, it was advanced, you know, Yang and his staff made a budget request to see if we could replace our streetlights a little bit more aggressively. And, uh, it was granted by council. Um, all streetlights will have LED fixtures by 2023. So, you know, you think about that as a, a perhaps a little thing, but that's 6,000 light fixtures. So you, you know, you think of a bucket truck, you know, with two people in the bucket truck, you know, touching 6,000 streetlights with a new fixture. There you can see the, the $3.1 million that was allocated. It's estimated to save almost 400,000 in electricity costs per year. And then, uh, anticipated savings and maintenance costs. We also, this is really an effort that's led primarily by facilities. But facilities is installing on, um, solar panels on transportation facilities. So we're going to take partial credit, right? But, uh, our current metro facility, um, is currently the site for the largest city of Madison solar, um, farm. And, uh, I think the installation, it was kind of a two-part installation on the roof there. The installation that occurred this past year brought the city to the one megawatt. And so, um, you know, that has occurred. And then, um, in the renewable report, it talked about a hundred percent electric buses. And so I brought, um, things to this committee. I think twice regarding electric bus conversion. This year, East Washington, uh, facility, the 1101 facility was retrofitted to electric, allow electric buses in the building. And we also had purchased, um, three electric buses from Proterra. We received those three electric buses. And, um, they didn't meet all of our specifications. They had some problems. And so we actually, uh, had to send them back and Proterra is, um, kind of correcting some deficiencies that we, we found in them. And so, um, you know, we, we plan to continue on that, but, um, we're not, um, you know, we have not implemented electric buses yet. And when I first presented this slide about a year ago, we thought we would be by now. Um, our procurements for buses for the next three years, we actually will not be procuring diesel buses. We'll be using our electric, our existing fleet. So that we can, um, use the monies for those buses to purchase an essentially a, a electric BRT fleet. So, um, in 2023, we hope to be, um, procuring 42 BRT buses, of which about 32 BRT buses will be electric. And so, um, whereas when, I'm going to say a year ago, when we were talking about it, it was like hypothetical and we hope we can do this. I'm, I'm going to say that the plan is, uh, firmer now. That it's more, um, more deliberate. Justin, who's our Metro Transit Manager, just came from Indigo where he built the second largest electric bus fleet in America. And so, you know, he knows what to look for. He also knows the problems associated with an electric fleet. So while this is, it appears like it's a, a delayed implementation of electric buses, I'm going to say it's a more assured implementation of the electric buses. Let's see. Probably after that, we'll be, we typically replace about 15 buses a year. It would be nice if we could have 10 of those buses be electric. Um, to perhaps the year 2028 and then perhaps in the year 2028, some of the, uh, challenges associated with battery electric buses will be worked out. And we could perhaps purchase all electric buses. Some of the challenges associated with electric buses, and we've talked about this before, is that oftentimes, you know, our, our buses run about 18 hours, um, for our core. And for the peak, you know, they run maybe about four hours. And, um, you know, there's a seven-hour range for an electric bus. And so that, that presents, uh, challenges. One way we're going to be able to get around that with BRT is because we're on a fixed route, we will be putting end-of-line chargers. And so, um, rather than having a BRT bus come back to the, you know, the garage to get charged, there'll be dwelling spots in the West End and the East End where we will be charging the buses. And so we're, you know, it's actually, um, the BRT is a good way to implement, initially implement electric buses. This is from last year, but this, this just illustrates how, um, electric buses can be challenging. Moscow implemented bus, you know, electric buses, I think two years ago. And they found that they actually needed about double the number of electric buses. Just because, um, they had to charge them, right? And so if you charge them and they didn't go the full amount, um, they, um, you have to have more. If we move on, um, parking right now is looking into vehicle electric procurement that's largely being handled by fleet. We get a lot of our, um, our vehicles just through fleet and, and then, uh, this summer, there was an electric cargo bike pilot project where we used, uh, some of our staff used electric cargo bike uh, for, um, to do city business rather than a car, you know? I think we had it for a couple of weeks and city engineering also had it for a couple of weeks. Uh, we have not put electric cargo bikes in our budget necessarily though. So we, we haven't necessarily gone the next step to say, well, this is something we want to do. So that's the internal things that we are, are doing. Perhaps a greater, um, effort or maybe a greater effect is changing our travel modes, uh, to non-polluting. Uh, and we might have a, a larger effect, um, you know, nationally, nationally, transportation makes up about a third of all greenhouse gas emissions. We can change that by change, by either increasing the occupancy of our vehicles so that we get more trips for, um, you know, a motor vehicle or, um, changing it to active transportation. So this is, uh, the current mode, the transportation, it's a poor graphic, I apologize for that. But it's for, um, Transportation to Work, American Community Survey, 2018. For Midwest City, we are not doing bad. Um, however, I will say that, uh, in 2014, our transit share was 10%, not nine percent, and our bike share was 6% and not 5%. And so we've actually gone down 1% in both transit and biking. As far as our, our rankings nationally, this is from the 2015 American Community Survey. We're 40th for transit ridership, um, 13th for bike ridership, and we're 10th for walking. So I'd say that our, uh, our active transportation, biking, walking is pretty good. You know, it's, it's not bad. Um, however, you know, our transit ridership is, you know, it's, it's good, but we could, um, you know, there's room for us to improve. So what are the, the key DOT efforts that shift mode and reduce VMT? And I'm just going to say that probably almost our full work plan is devoted to these type of efforts. The one exception I was going to say would be Vision Zero, but today Alder Foster mentioned that that reducing VMT should be part of Vision Zero. So that would, that would link everything we're doing towards reducing VMT, right? But, you know, the bus rapid transit is a significant focus of our transportation department right now. Increasing transit usage associated with the network redesign. The TDM ordinance, um, is a, has a huge potential for reducing VMT. Uh, complete streets can encourage active transportation. I could not find any, um, studies that quantitatively said how complete streets reduces VMT. They just qualitatively said that it provides the opportunity. Uh, the shared streets, which is something we did for COVID, I think was a huge success. And, um, my, my suspicion is that it's not going to be just a, be a 2020 initiative. It'll probably live on into 2021 and 2022. And then, um, finally, is a, is a land use feature, but it's, talks about the transit-oriented design overlay, which is something that we'd like to bring to this board, perhaps in a year or so, associated with the BRT. So, um, this is just, uh, something, um, that shows, you know, the, um, the typical, uh, emissions from an auto trip to work versus a, um, transit trip to work. This explains, um, how if you prioritize transit on, on the roadway infrastructure, you can actually carry more people. You know, to the left is a traditional, you know, three-lane roadway. Talks about how many people traveling through it and a light cycle on the right. Kind of a, just, it's just a nice graphic that illustrates that it's more efficient to move people through transit. This is, um, an interesting graphic that I found. Just compares the maximum passengers per hour on a lane by urban mode and it's a spatial analysis. And, um, it actually shows how much you, how many people you can carry by, um, using transit, bus in a mixed-lane or bus in a dedicated lane. So metro, um, if we can get more people into a metro bus, okay, that's a big deal. And it, it really does reduce, um, carbon, okay? So this is assuming, um, this is assuming diesel buses, okay? This does not include, um, electric buses. But if we could just get, uh, 10,000 new riders, which would be like a 20% increase in Metro's ridership, maybe an 18% increase. You know, it would reduce our CO2 emissions by 6,000 tons a year. You know, so that reduction represents a third of Metro's total emissions, right? And so a 20% or maybe between a 15 and 20% increase in ridership might be attainable or goal, you know, with our BRT system. Other systems such as, I believe Richmond saw that type of increase when they implemented BRT. And then if we were to, to move to electric, assuming, you know, carbon-free electric, the CO2 emissions reductions would be even greater. The TDM effect on VMT, you know, Eric and his team could, uh, provide many examples. But I often go back to Arlington County, Virginia, just because they've had TDM measures in effect for probably 30 years. And it's really made a marked difference in their, for instance, uh, the percentage of of Arlington residents driving alone to work has dropped from 63 to 53 in 2013, you know? That's a huge, that's 10, that's a 10% reduction, which seems like not that big a deal, but that's a huge amount. That's a huge amount, you know? And then the percentage of Arlington workers driving alone, including those coming from other jurisdictions, has dropped from 59% to 54%. So, you know, that's, that's trending in the, in the correct way. And I think that's largely, or at least they credit this largely to some of their, uh, transportation demand management measures that we are discussing in front of this board. And then finally, there's a, a sustainable land use. And just put this as perhaps an ancillary. But the, 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 um, how do I put it? I'm going to describe this graph. The vertical axis represents, um, the lane miles per thousand residents. And then, um, horizontal represents the, um, you know, the residents per square mile. You know, and so if we are able to have, you know, more density, it reduces land consumption. You know, it's just, it's, it's just intuitive, but it just helps. So, um, and then the capita roadway supply declines with each density, each dot represents, um, the US urban use region. And then, um, when we look at the housing sites, you know, a typical housing site would generate vehicle trips per day per household. And that says 6.7 for a typical housing site. And one might argue, if you were to go to the, um, you know, the IT trip generation manual, it would probably stay as closer to nine, you know, nine trips. Whereas a TOD housing site, which is in a denser urban area, would be about 3.8. So, um, developments that are supported by transit like the Galaxy, like, um, or Capella, go, I always have a hard time saying that, Village, you know, like Madison Yards. Those are, those are the types of developments that because of where they're placed and because of the density will generate less trips and therefore are more sustainable, you know, produce less of a carbon footprint. So that's our, um, those are our efforts. Specifically, I do not believe we have a, a specific VMT reduction goal. The, um, the analysis by ACEES states that we had a 20% VMT reduction goal. I, I do not know where they got that, um, that figure. And we, you know, the board could decide if, if they wanted to, to, um, create a VMT reduction goal, if you wanted to. I think right now we are focusing our efforts on just actions that will reduce VMT. And so I think I'll end it at that and answer any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Before we go to questions, we do have one registering for public comment. Um, and I believe, uh, they're still with us, Greg May, 426 West Wilson Street, Madison. Um, neither support nor oppose wishing to speak, uh, representing, uh, 350 Madison. Uh, so Greg, if you're there, uh, you may begin when you're ready. Uh, you got, uh, three minutes on the clock.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, just wanted to speak to this issue. We've been following this report, um, at 350 Madison and, um, you know, obviously a little disappointed by Madison's score on this, um, scorecard, although the transportation policies area wasn't one of our better sections, even though we, we were just at an average score. So, um, you know, we're just looking to kind of reiterate to people, obviously, transportation is the largest contributor to climate change across, uh, America. And so, you know, And so, you know, if Madison, you know, with its stated climate goals wants to be reducing emissions, we really need to be thinking really critically about our infrastructure and our decision making. And so one of the items in that summary document that Tom shared, just a little paragraph, does say that Madison does not have a VMT. I think it specifically says it does not have a V reduction goal and that that would help. And obviously, I appreciate all of the actions that are being done to reduce VMT, but I think there is value in having that as a stated goal because there are times where even though our actions, some of these actions are working to reduce VMT, where it seems like we're moving explicitly in the opposite direction. And we've kind of gotten into this scenario, kind of a death of a thousand cuts, just parking spaces, a collection of parking spaces here, you know, based on the conversation we had earlier about whether or not we should allow roadways in for connectivity. And, you know, even discussions about adding kind of flexible laneage on the Belt Line are things that are, you know, kind of running counter to that goal. So I think, you know, beyond all the normal things we, we talk about with, you know, infill developments and, you know, building affordable housing along transit lines and things and working to kind of implement TDM policies, I think it would be valuable to pursue a VMT reduction goal. If not just to change the paradigm so that when they're having discussions, you know, about what a neighborhood looks like in 50 or 100 years, that we're not thinking about, you know, how many cars will be here and what we can get through, but maybe an alternative world where we're, you know, have a more sustainable transportation system with less people driving and so that it's on the books and we're working towards that goal as something really explicit. So that it goes, so that it extends beyond just the actions that were listed beforehand, but kind of so that it's working through all of our efforts. So I'm here to speak for that and hopefully we can get a VMT reduction goal on the line and looking forward to seeing and learning more about the efforts of this commission to, in order to reduce transportation emissions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Thanks again, Greg, for sticking with us. I know it's been a longer meeting than maybe we typically have, so thanks again for hanging out. All right. Questions for staff?
I just want to point out there was also one item, feedback about this in the emails that I sent out earlier.
Oh, right. Actually, I think there might have been more than one. Let me just read those because they came in sort of late. I'm fairly certain that this one from Haley Thompson at 1209 Chandler Street is relevant to this item. Hi there, I would like to comment in support of the recommended transportation actions made by the ACEEES 2020 Clean Energy Scorecard. I'll list out the recommendations made and describe from personal experience why I believe they would help the city with its transportation, energy and climate goals. One, Madison has not yet adopted goals to reduce vehicle miles traveled, GHG emissions from transportation. Adopting and tracking progress towards these goals would help lay the groundwork for transportation action. Her response says, "The city of Madison has a ton of documents, reports and plans around renewable energy. While it is easy to find documents on goals and plans, it is quite hard to find concrete systematic updates on how these goals are progressing. The city of Madison really needs to, one, create some quantifiable and measurable goals, such as the VMT GHG reduction, excuse me, VMT GHG emissions goals described above. And two, actually make plans to measure them and report findings back on a regular basis. Serious plans like allocations of funding for benchmarking reporting deadlines and a systematic method of reporting agreed upon in advance." And then second point, "Madison can further promote sustainable transportation within the city by encouraging or requiring the creation of affordable housing units in transit served areas and subsidizing efficient transportation options for low income residents. The United States has an affordable housing crisis and Madison is no exception. Adding affordable housing in all parts of the city enables people to live closer to work or other areas they frequent. That leads to less vehicle miles traveled in commuting, stronger and more walkable neighborhoods, and more housing options for people in low, in lower income jobs. Adding affordable housing near transit also reduces sprawl, which is good for the environment and good for a bus system. How expensive is it to expand, extend bus lines into sprawled out suburbs? I'm guessing very expensive. This is a no brainer. The city already has great goals set out in the comprehensive plan to encourage infill and add more affordable housing, and we should be doing everything possible to keep making progress. Madison should also definitely focus more on subsidizing public transportation for low income residents. Cities all over the US subsidize car usage by putting free parking around shopping centers, creating rules around minimum parking for developments, and maintaining ample free space for residents to park multiple cars. Why should a car owner pay nothing but gas money to go shopping, but a low income person who's taking the bus has to pay $2 each way? A person riding the bus should be rewarded for reducing congestion and taking the more environmentally friendly mode of transportation, not charged an extra $4 for their positive actions. As a city, we should be thinking more about equity in parking, car use and the space vehicles take up in our city. A city could be filled by pedestrians, bikes, buses and other modes of transportation that are good for people and the environment. Thanks for your time and consideration. I appreciate all the work the Transportation Policy and Planning Board does for Madison and the opportunity to speak as a citizen of Madison." Hopefully I didn't read that too fast to understand. The next one here is from a Susan Miller, 2233 Rowley Avenue, 53, Madison. Looks like also a member of 350 Madison. Dear members of Transportation Policy and Planning Board, first, I appreciate your work focusing on transportation infrastructure and policies for the city of Madison. And I thank you for considering Madison's poor performance on the 2020 Clean Energy Scorecard on your agenda. Given our city's stated climate goals, this performance is particularly unacceptable. As you well know, given your role in the TPVB transportation emissions from fossil fuel vehicles is a major contributor to climate change. Indeed, the 12/7 2020 Axios newsletter states, "With transportation now the biggest source of US greenhouse gas emissions, governments and corporations are embracing new sustainability goals. Failure to rapidly reduce fossil fuel emissions from vehicles not harms, not harms our climate, but also harms the health of many people due to particular emissions. It is time that the government of the city of Madison goes beyond merely embracing sustainability goals and demonstrates with action and data that the city is moving from laggard to leader in reducing emissions from transportation. In particular, I ask that you establish enforced policies that reduce personal vehicle usage with, for example, TDMP policies that make vehicle parking, excuse me, that make parking expensive and difficult, except for disabled people, with demonstrated annual decreases in VMT. Increase and improve bus service so that people of all income levels have access to this service to get to work and school, especially important given that low income urban sprawl is underway in Madison housing patterns. Provide financial incentives and cultural recognition for delivery companies that use EVs. Increase the proportion of EVs in use through, for example, removing the wheel tax for EVs but keeping it for fossil fueled vehicles. And continue to improve the infrastructure for walking and biking. I'm aware that we are living in very challenging times and there are many other problems to address. But the climate issue is the elephant in the room. It will be there whether or not COVID recedes, employment recovers and racism diminishes. We cannot afford, as a human species, to continue pushing the limits of the earth that sustains us. I therefore thank you for taking aggressive steps that include measurable indicators of progress to reduce fossil fuel emissions from tailpipes." Okay. Again, hopefully I didn't read that too quickly for you to understand. Questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. Chris McAhill, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll just say, Tom, thanks for putting this together. I think it's helpful to see the scope of what we're thinking about in terms of these climate goals. I think Madison is not alone in not meeting its goals, which isn't a good thing. It's a fact. And I think the reason that we're going to see that continue to be true in large part, especially in transportation, is because of the VMT issue. So I think what we've heard from the registrants and, and, you know, sort of discussion here is that that is critical. We talked about VMT goals, I think, recently. And I would just reiterate that I think probably setting like a threshold of a 20% reduction isn't necessarily the right way to go, but at least setting goals of whether we're moving things up or down is going to be important. I think you heard with the registrant Greg. Well, I'll just say like, it's easy to see what we do that can move VMT down. And it's not always hard to see when we're doing things that move it up. So Greg, I was going to say, mentioned, you know, Beltline running and stuff like that. I think if we can apply this VMT lens to more decisions in that way, then that will help us meet our goal. And it's not just transportation, it's land use also. We're not applying that lens when we allow new development out in areas that you can't serve by transit and stuff. So just my thoughts on how VMT goals play into this whole thing.
Thank you, Chris. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree, Tom. I thought you did a really good job of kind of doing a comprehensive kind of overview of how we can impact this, what we are already doing. I do think that, I think we are, we are working really hard towards this in most of the big projects that we've, that are in front of us right now. I think it's good to be explicit about that also. And I think, you know, I'd like this to be, I think we need to find ways to incorporate this into our discussions more explicitly and more routinely. So like, we know that kind of some of these things will, will lead us in the right direction, but I think it would be helpful for us to make those direct connections more frequently. And I do think that, as others have said, and as we talked about last time, this setting, setting a more specific goal for ourselves around VMT. And, you know, I mentioned before, it's, you know, impact on safety as well. And I think that it is a really important place to focus for ourselves. I think we should continue that conversation, figure out how we want to measure it and what kind of goal we want to put in front of us there, I think would be useful. And I also agree with what Greg said and Chris mentioned again about finding ways to make sure that we're bringing that into our decision making. And, you know, it's perhaps easy for things like a Beltline expansion. But, I mean, honestly, even the discussion that we had tonight around what is sort of a very tiny microscopic in the grand scheme of things, road connection. But, you know, is that, what, what side of the scale is that going to put for things like Vision Zero and traffic safety? And what, what side of the scales is it going to do around VMT reduction or increase? And I think, you know, it, we can dismiss those kinds of big, big picture questions for a very specific project like that. But I think that to the degree that we're able to at least remind ourselves of those questions and kind of keep that framing as we evaluate the questions in front of us, I think we'll be better off because it is really difficult when we're, when we're talking about specific projects and initiatives to make those connections back to global warming. But I think it is important that we figure out a way to do it. So thanks for wrapping that all up. And I, I hope that we keep this conversation in front of us more directly and, and very much support coming up with a specific VMT goal.
Thanks, Alder Foster. Eric Sunquest, go ahead.
I agree with everything that's been said, including thanks to Tom for the good summary. I just had a question. We, last time we talked about measuring VMT and, but I don't know what, you know, staff was going to talk and come up with something, I think. So I'm just asking where that stands now, since we can't really have a VMT goal if we're not, we don't have a way to measure it.
Yeah, I'll give a four sentence summary. We are able to measure VMT on a county basis using the WISDOT methodology. And we have that data back for 20 years. Nice thing about that is they, they do it, you know? I'm always all for things that other people do. I think Alder Foster and I saw a presentation of using probe data, street light data from the MPO. And if we can use VMT in that way, I'm going to say that some of the data seemed a little bit counterintuitive, like where some trips were, traffic's being reduced in some areas of the county during the COVID crisis versus some increases. And I, you know, we could ask the MPO to provide a presentation here. I, I just, I just was a little, some of the data seemed a little counterintuitive. And Alder Foster, you might add to that if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just needed, there's probably a little bit more work that needs to be done to kind of validate that and figure out if it's going to be something reliable for us, especially if we wanted to start using it now. I mean, I think long term, it's probably going to be a good tool, but we may need to spend some time doing more validation to have it be something that we can actually use as a, as a measure in the short term.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I don't think the county, personally, I don't think the county level data is going to be good enough for our purposes. I'm kind of a fan of the streetlight stuff, so I'd be interested to hear. Maybe we don't have to do it tonight, but I'd be interested to hear the, where you think the anomalies are. And, you know, we've used it in different places and found it to be pretty good. But even if we went back to the method that was being used from like 2010 to 2013, that didn't, I mean, that didn't seem that bad to me. I mean, you're, we're, we're getting the counts every so often anyway, and we know how long the street segments are, so it's just a matter of adding, replacing the old number with the new number, seems like.
Actually.
Go ahead.
It, I think it was, it was somewhat labor intensive. I could ask for an estimate of how, how long it took, but we don't take counts on every street, you know? And so the, I think it required numerous weeks of staff work. But perhaps at the next meeting, I could, if we put the MPO's street light data on the agenda sometime, maybe I could make sure that I have an estimate of what the effort was to calculate the VMT using it.
Okay. And maybe there's an easier way to do it than they were before, but, okay. Just wanted to come back to that, so thanks.
All right. Any additional questions or discussion for this item? All right. Seeing none. Next item is Legislar 63244, general announcements. I don't really have any. And then last item then is future meeting agenda items for January 4th. Obviously, in addition to the item that we referred today around easements and city property interests, we've got approved bus rapid transit locally preferred alternative revisions, the capital improvement program process, some Vision Zero, Transportation Department 2020 report, the 2021 DOT work plan, comprehensive plan review, and then discussion on equity. Obviously, this list is tentative. It may shift a little bit, especially if we get some referrals. That's generally what we have on tap for, for January. So any questions or comments regarding future agenda items for January? Seeing none. Alder Kim, go ahead, please.
Yep, sorry. That comprehensive plan review seems like a massive item. What is the, what's the strategy for this body discussing that?
Is that directed towards itself?
Anyway, anyway, the chair, whoever is putting it on our agenda. It just seems like a massive item for one meeting that already has a lot of really substantive items on it.
Yeah, I, I will say that all of the list that Tom listed off might not be available. Like, for instance, I think the capital improvement prioritization might get shifted back. The comp plan really just has nine strategies, you know? And we could, for transportation and land use. And, you know, we, you all are not unaware of what we've been doing. So it's, it's just more of, I think it would just be looking at what are we supposed to be doing? Like, for instance, it says obtaining a bus satellite facility. And so we would just give you an update on the status of those individual items, you know, BRT, you know, give you an update. And so I'm a fan of, or proponent of working the plan. And I believe all of our efforts that we're working on are contained in the comp plan, with the exception of Vision Zero. Vision Zero actually was not in the comp plan. So that's an initiative that we've taken up kind of separately or parallel.
So you know how even a Vision Zero update is lengthy, like updating nine strategies? And I know how thorough you are, Tom, and I really appreciate how thorough you are and how detailed you are. I feel like, I don't know, I guess I would ask leadership and staff to do some thinking about how, how, how TPVB should attack chunks of it. Because I don't think we just want to do a pro forma whiz through it. And we want to have substantive discussions, but And we want to have substantive discussions, but to me, that just looks massive.
Great. Thank you, Alder Campbell. We'll definitely discuss that prior to setting the agenda. You know, they think, well, you know, we can divide that up into chunks. I appreciate that feedback. Any other comments or discussion? All right. Thank you. I know it's a longer meeting than we typically have. I think we got through a lot of really important stuff this evening. That's all I have. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Overchairman.
Second.
Thank you. In a second. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Those know, we're adjourned. Have a good month, everyone. We'll see you in January.